We'll call the Lowell City Meeting, Council Meeting to order. Do the prayer. Dear God, as the session opens, we pray for your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for your direction that will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city, to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, two of the republics which stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Samaras.
Yeah.
It's nine present. Do we have any memorials, Ty? Counselor Noon.
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a moment of silence at the Chamber for Dhamnang Phin. Dhamnang, a Cambodian-American artist, social activist, mentor, a brother, an uncle, a father, and a friend to all, died peacefully after long and brave battle of cancer at 6:20 a.m. on Monday, August 9, 2001, at home in Champswood, Mass., surrounded by family members. Dhamnang was 56 years old, born on April 6, 1965, in Siam, Cambodia. He was the youngest child of the only son of the Phin family. He is survived by seven older sisters, six beautiful children, 21 nieces and nephews, and many more in-law. Dhamnang was educated as a traditional Khmer artist with a bachelor's degrees of art from the University of Fine Art in Phnom Penh in 1989. Dhamnang worked on numerous art projects, particularly the Buddhist religious temple in his hometown in Siam, in Phnom Penh, and many rural parts of Cambodia. He was last commissioned to work on a Cambodian Buddhist temple in Oakland, California, under the special guise, leadership of the venerable Mahapuniripin. He's also participated in many art exhibit in the United States and in Cambodia. He was truly an enthusiastic lover of Cambodian artists, cultural history. He immigrated to the United States in 1990 and was reunion with one of his older sister, Sally Phin, who was a survivor from the killing field of Cambodia, who was immigrated to the United States, settled in Boston in early 1980. As a trained artist, Dhamnang was very passionate about Khmer art, including painting, sculpture, poetry, history, and Khmer traditional dance art form. He taught traditional art, Khmer art, to Cambodian American Jews in various nonprofit and community-based organizations, including the Roka, reach out to Chelsea Athletes in Chelsea Department of Youth Service and the Greater Lowell YMCA, Cambodian Mutual Assistant Association of Greater Lowell, and the Cambodian American Art Association and the Cambodian Expression. He was happiest when working on paintings, sculpture, design, decorated art form of religious temple and cultural structure. Dhamnang was generous and very supportive of other artists and other fellow Cambodian. He has unsuffishly helped and mentored many emerging artists in the greater Boston and Lowell and his native country of Cambodia. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Counselor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chambers for Kevin Sullivan. Kevin Sullivan, 89, of Tuxbury, passed away in comfort of his home on August 1, 2021. Sullivan is the former beloved husband of 55 years to the late Margaret Peggy Sullivan, caring father of Kevin A. Sullivan and his wife Mary Jane of Tuxbury, Mary Gorman and her husband John P. of West Newbury, John D. Sullivan of Tuxbury, Danny David Sullivan and his wife Catherine of Boston, and the late Paul Sullivan. Loving grandfather of Ryan Sullivan, Charlie Smith, Kerry Sullivan, Margaret Legasi, Jack Gorman, Hannah and John Sullivan, great-grandfather to Callan, Danny Isla, Molly, Timmy, Lana, Paul, Grant, and Tommy, son of the late John and Mary, D. Mary and Mary Sullivan, brother of the late Mary E. Sullivan, Regina Potenud, Teresa Toomey, Dorothy Hudson, Harold Timothy, Robert Chester, Michael, and Edward Sullivan, brother-in-law of the late Ann Marie Roberts. Sullivan served in his country as a United States Navy veteran in the Korean War with the Navy Seabees. After leaving the service, Sullivan ran a construction company, several small businesses, and earned his law degree. Sullivan was a lobbyist, general practice lawyer, and served as counsel to many political figures and businessmen from the mid-1970s until his semi-retirement in the 1990s. He's remembered for his work ethic, his political interests, notably the former chairman of the Tuxbury Board of Selectmen and Board of Health, and the first Tuxbury resident to serve as a state representative for the 28th Middlesex District. Kevin's family would like to especially thank Evelyn Cooper and Said and Luvetta Mansari for their commitment to providing thoughtful care to their father in the last few years of his life. May his soul rest in peace.
Thank you. I just have one from the podium up here. A moment of silence for Joseph R. Griffin, 67, passed away Friday evening, July 30, surrounded by his loving family at Brigham Women's Hospital in Boston. Joe Griffin was a family man, lifelong educator, and a friend to all, born and raised in Lowell, Massachusetts, in the Highlands neighborhood. Joe, Joe's pride and joy was his wife of 33 years, Maureen. Joe and his wife met at the Greater Lowell Technical Vocational School. Joe was a devoted marketing educated, marketing education teacher at the Greater Lowell Regional Vocational Technical School in Tinsborough, where his students knew him as Mr. G. He retired from his passion of teaching in 2018 after 35-year career. He will be sadly missed. We could, Counselor Mercier.
I'd like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber to all those that have passed on since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. We can dim the lights. Thank you. Next, under Mayor's business, we have communication, remote, and Zoom participation. Need a motion to accept the place on file by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. Second, we have a recognition. We have a guest in the chambers here, Mr. Robert Mills and his family. I'd like to offer Mr. Mills a citation for his years of service for Lowell at the Lowell Sun. So if you don't mind standing up, Robert, we have a citation for you from the Mayor's office and City Council. Just, yeah, right, yep. So it reads, "Citation, be it here known to all that City of Lowell, Commonwealth, Massachusetts, hereby offers its sincere gratitude and congratulations to Robert Mills upon his well-deserved retirement as editor and journalist for about 20 years at the Lowell Sun. Anyone that knew, anyone that knows Robert Mills knows how humble, dedicated, compassionate, and fair he was when it came to reporting on the daily state of affairs in the city. A model community journalist, Rob is also remembered for his remarkable photographs he has taken over the years that accompanied his writing. City lemites the, your departure from the sun, and you will be greatly missed from your former role. Now therefore, I, Mayor John Leahy, hereby offer all the best to Robert Mills upon his retirement from the Lowell Sun and wish him all the best for his future endeavors. City of Lowell extends its deepest appreciation to Robert Mills and is proud to honor him with this, his distinguished individual for his dedicated years of service to the city, given this 10th day of August by myself and the entire city council." So. And we also want to wish your daughter a birthday today.
It is.
Yep. Happy birthday. Yay!
For the record, it's actually her that's been the picture on my Twitter profile for all of these years. So it's really her that deserves all the honors. So, I'm very nervous. I'm a writer, I'm not a talker. But when it comes to the pictures and when it comes to the stories especially, I've, I'm not sure I'm anything special. My gift, my, my magic was that I had looked around the city of Lowell and I listened to the people here in the city and the stories that they have. And this has been true for 300 years since we had Mill Girls and people who changed the entire world. I was a good reporter because Lowell has so many good stories and so many awesome people. And so I just had an easy job. I had to make the world's most interesting and cool people sound interesting. And I guess I did okay at that. The other thing is just, I was the son of two addicts. We lived in a house trailer. And, and the only thing that made me different than many, many kids in this city that are born in those circumstances, I had a grandmother that took care of me. I got, I got extremely lucky. And I think about that every day. I'm mentally ill, not very, but I have anxiety and some other things. So if, if I'm worth a citation from the city, then I hope everybody remembers, so is maybe every single kid that's born to addicts in this city. So is every single person who struggles with mental illness. Sometimes a little amount of illness, I think, gives us muscles in our brains that other people don't have, and a perspective other people don't have. So I accept this honor, but I hope it reflects on absolutely, absolutely everyone. I hope this reflects on everyone who was born, who comes from a family of, with addiction in it. I hope this reflects on everyone who struggles with mental illness. I hope this reflects on everyone with twins. Because I don't think I'm anything special. I just had a special ability to listen to other people and to realize how incredible the people in this city are. For hundreds of years now, the people of Lowell have been creating things that change the world, and I don't see that stopping anytime soon. So I left the paper, but I'm not going away. I'd also be totally remiss to not mention Dan Phelps, Crispus Eric, Bruce Phillips, Dan O'Brien, Charlie St. Ammon, a lot of people who work even harder than me but didn't get the, they were on the back end, they were in the background. But they, they busted their butts for years in the same conditions as me, and they, they gave this city a paper it deserved, even if the parent company didn't. And they'll still, Jake Vitale, who's there now, Bruce Castleberry, are amazing people. Wait till you see what Jake Vitale can do if you, if you think I'm good. And boy, I think that's it. I'm a writer, not a talker. So all I can say is, thank you so much. Like, I didn't know where the heck I was going when I became a reporter. I just knew I wanted to write and tell people's stories, and I found a city full of the most amazing people on earth. So turns out I got a lot of good stories. So thank you for the stories.
Thank you. You had quite a following, too. You want to do a quick picture, Robert? Just come up and we'll... Thank you. And then just one last thing under the Mayor's portion, a proclamation for National Health Center Week. So we have a proclamation for the Lowell Community Health Center. City of Lowell, Commonwealth, Massachusetts, by his honor, John Leahy, Mayor, proclamation whereas for over 50 years Lowell Community Health Center has provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventive health care in the city of Lowell, delivering value to and having a significant impact on the city's health care system with a focus on equity and access. Serving 50,000 people in Greater Lowell, Lowell Health, Lowell Community Health Center is part of a network providing health care for 30 million Americans in over 1,400 communities across the nation, serving one in every 12 people in the United States. Whereas Lowell Community Health Center is a beacon of essential resources and support in testing and treatment in the face of COVID-19 pandemic, Lowell Community Health, Community is committed to the, to integra, integrating the wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, substance use disorder, HIV/AIDS and pharmacy services to meet the needs and challenges of their communities. Lowell Community Health Center is locally owned and operated nonprofit business with a majority consumer board, which employs almost 400 people in the community and is a critical economic engine in Lowell. And whereas the National Community Health Center model continues to prove, prove an effective means of overcoming barriers in the health care access, including race, ethnicity, geographic, income, and insurance status, improving health care outcomes and reducing health care system costs. During National Health Center Week, we celebrate the social justice legacy of Lowell Community Health Center, the work of America's community health centers, and the vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of America's health care system. Now therefore, I, John Leahy, Mayor, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim August 8th to the 14th as National Health Center Week and urge all citizens to celebrate and appreciate the work of Lowell Community Health Center in partnership with America's community health centers and the communities that they serve, given this 10th day of August 2021 by myself and the entire city council. So, yeah. Sue's here to accept that, and we thank you, Sue. If you'd like to say a couple words.
I would, thank you. I first just want to thank you all for recognizing the wonderful staff of, oh, the wonderful staff of Lowell Community Health Center. You know, for all of us, these past 16 months or more, I have taken a toll on all of us in our personal lives and in our professional lives. And as I work every day with our health care workforce, I see the toll that this pandemic is taking on the very people that need to take care of all of us. So the fact that you took time today to acknowledge our staff at Lowell Community Health Center really means a great deal to us. Regrettably, the pandemic persists. I do believe we have many months ahead of us with the Delta variant and perhaps some other variants. And we are in this together as a community to take care of each and every member of our community and make sure that not only do they have access to vaccines and testing. And so the battle continues against this virus. And again, it really means a lot to us that the city is taking time to recognize us. It means a lot to our staff. And I just want to thank the city manager. You've been incredible at supporting and working in partnership with us in, as we all know, incredibly trying conditions, trying to respond every time a new variant occurs or there's an issue with the vaccines, like with J&amp;J, and we've had to pivot. And we've had to pivot together as a community. That is what makes Lowell such a special place. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for supporting your health center. We are a community health center. We're your health center. We work for you. We work for each community member. And there's no way we could do our job if it weren't, if we didn't have the wonderful partnership with the city as well as with Lowell General and Circle Health. And my gratitude goes back to you and all of you. And thank you again. And just remember that our health care workforce is so tired, and they're diminishing. People are leaving the profession. And you hear that in other sectors as well as in education. And so these moments of recognizing them and taking care of them are critical, and we'll need to do more of that as we face what, what's in store for us. So thank you from all of us, all 400 and some of us at Lowell Community Health Center. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all the work that you do. Next, we have city clerk minutes. Need approval of the Minutes of the Arts and Culture Subcommittee on the 27th. City council regular meeting, July 27th. Municipal facilities joint with the Lowell School Committee Facility Subcommittee on the 28th, July 28th. Neighborhood Subcommittee, August 3rd. Economic Downtown Development Subcommittee, August 3rd, for acceptance. Need a motion by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Mercier. All right, being close to 7 o'clock, why don't we get right into the public hearings? First ordinance to create a business, create business service marketing manager position in the, in Career Center. Open up the hearing to all those in favor. In favor. Hearing none, that portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition. Opposition. Hearing none. Roll call. Oh, yeah, sorry. Need a motion by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Mercier. Approved, roll call. Counselor Chow. Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Samaras.
Yes.
Nine yeses. Second ordinance amending the Department of Public Works, establish a Division of Electricity. Open up the hearing to all those in favor. In favor. In favor, hearing none, that portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition. Opposition. That portion is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Elliott. Roll call. Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Samaras.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Mr. Mayor...
Mr. Mayor, I had a question on this.
Oh, sorry. Council Mercia.
Throw you to the city manager. How many city electricians do we have? Do we know how many city electricians?
I don't know. I know Steve Kucha was obviously the head electrician. I'm not so sure. I think there is a vacancy, but I don't have the exact figure. I can get back to you. The Commissioner Clancy's on vacation this week, so.
And is this division of electricity separating from land and buildings and become a separate department in itself?
It would be a separate division, yes. The, it reflects the actual workforce and it's aligning the workforce with what, so for instance, the city electrician in the electrical department maintains its own budget. It maintains its own staff. For instance, they will do things like, functions include maintenance of the traffic signals and particular street lights throughout the city, maintenance of electrical infrastructure within the city buildings. And so it, their work really is unto all the electricians and not under lands and buildings. So it's just to, this, there's no increased cost. There's no increased revenue demand as a result of this organization. It's just so the org chart actually flows more aligned with what is, is how they do their work.
So the city electricians will come out under this department?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Council Noon.
Question on this as well. Madam Manager, was this separation request by the Commissioner of TPW?
It was, yes. Yeah. And it was, as I said, to more accurately reflect the actual flow chart and work organization chart of the organization. Because the work that the electricians does is really separate and distinct from lands and buildings. And so this way, it's more efficient. There isn't, as I said, there's no added cost by the reorganization. It's just a more efficient way of maintaining this separation between the two, which exists.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions on that? 4-3 ordinance, create a position for the ARPA Finance Manager. Open up the hearing to all those in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor. That portion is closed. Open up to anyone speaking in opposition. 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 That portion is closed. Need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
This is a grant-funded position.
It would be funded through the ARPA.
And once the grant expires, so does the position?
The position. The idea, again, behind this position is, as the council knows, the city will be receiving over $75 million under ARPA funds with many, many complex eligibility requirements as well as a number of outreach type of efforts that have to go into this. Many communities are forming this position because it is paid for by, by ARPA, just to make sure that it's being done as thoroughly, as efficiently for the city and for all the needs under ARPA.
Okay, thank you.
Council Rourke, then Council Noon.
Thank you through Madam Manager. So who will this person report to? What department will it be in?
I, it would be under the manager's office, but I would expect finance would be the direct connect for ARPA.
Okay, the salary range, which is, which is high, who, how is that established? Is that by the federal funding of it or is it just?
We looked at what other communities, what the competitive rate is for other communities that have either already established the position or are in the process of establishing the position.
Okay, so this person, does candidate have all the benefits involved of the city employee and all such as?
It would be a city employee, correct.
But once the money runs out, then the position ends?
Correct. Once there's no need for ARPA. And it, and it may be sooner. It's hard to know. So for instance, the last year of, you know, we really don't know because we haven't done this before. But the, the monies have to be expended by a certain date, but then there's a whole nother year where wrapping up all of the necessary requirements with the federal government have to, have to be accomplished. I think the real importance of this position is, obviously, there's nobody in city government that has this job description because we haven't had this type of revenue. And, and of course, the many, many demands on, on ARPA funding are, it's pretty complex and will require someone to devote all their time to it. But it is not something that would last beyond, and that's how it's written. It would be dependent on the ARPA funding.
Thank you.
Council Noon, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Madam Manager, I understand that there's no model to learn from because this is new and this person would be a point person. So would this person be a point person to listen to the public input as to how we allocate this fund and administer it as well as monitor the fund, doing all those three?
So we envision this person to do a number of things, including outreach to the community, meeting with community, setting up those community meetings, and, and having the input from the community for the council, for city government, and making sure that those communications, and then working through the, how those allotments will be recommended. Obviously, it's the council that will decide, you know, a lot of these, but bringing to the council all of the information and research necessary to make those decisions, along with city government.
Given that guideline for federal fund, I'm sure there's a guideline to meet, suppose a nonprofit getting this grant, that they have to spend those grand in a certain way. So this person also monitor that to making sure that those guidelines met?
That's correct. So, so the, once there's a determination of the priorities and the allocation of monies, there are requirements in, in terms of monitoring the monies once they are given in, depending on, to a certain entity. So that's all part and parcel of what has to be followed.
That is a big job. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, the manager answered my questions. The position will sunset after two years. No additional.
Well, it might be four. I think it's depending, because the ARPA funding goes till.
You can spend it for two years and then.
Up to 2024, and then you have up to 2025 after that, so.
But the position will be paid out of.
It will be paid out of the ARPA funding, correct.
That's a good thing, as well as any administrative costs. But I think you mentioned, there's 300 pages of guidance that comes with this money.
So far, and they keep updating it.
Similar to the first CARES money. I mean, it's complicated. It does come with strings. It's $70 million, so we just have to make sure that, that we spend it. So I'm going to support it. I think it's, it's important to have one person that, as you mentioned, going to go out to the community, let us know what is eligible, what's not eligible, and we're going to spend it on, on priority. So I, I think it makes, it makes sense. I'm going to support it and just going to be another, you know, more assistance to the finance team, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Need a motion to adopt by Council Drinkwater, seconded by Council Chow. Roll call.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Samaras.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
4-4 ordinance, create a position for Substance Use Prevention Grant Coordinator in the Health Department. Open up the hearing to all those in favor. In favor. In favor. Seeing none. That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition. 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 Hearing none. Any questions? Need a motion to adopt by Council Samaras, seconded by Council Noon. Roll call.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Samaras.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Utility Public Hearings, TC Systems Incorporated, AT&amp;T, Gilmore Group, request insulation of 116 feet of underground conduit at intersection of Industrial and Reese Avenues. Open up the hearing. All those in favor, open up the hearing. In favor. In favor. That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition. 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 That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer the wire inspector for a report and recommendation by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Drinkwater. All those in favor. TC Systems Incorporated, AT&amp;T, Gilmore Group, request insulation of 44 feet of underground conduit at Appleton and Thorne Dyke Streets. Open up the hearing to all those in favor. In favor. In favor. That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition. 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 That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer to the wire inspector for report and recommendation by Council Samaras, seconded by Council Rourke. And last, National Grid requests, requests to relay gas main at 1895 1993 Middlesex Street with 12-inch plastic gas main in the sidewalk. Open up to all those in favor. In favor. In favor. Hearing none. That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition. 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 That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer the wire inspector for report. Yeah.
How long this project's going to take?
Ma'am, there's nobody here from National.
There's nobody here. Is someone here from National Grid? Oh, there you are.
Oh, all right. So this is Middlesex Street.
Yeah, this is Middlesex Street. This is an ongoing project. This is one section of this project where we're going to be relaying gas main away from the existing main. We have to go into the sidewalk. The projects, the entire project's expected to last about, I'd say into the first week of October.
Four months.
Excuse me?
How long?
October.
October, one, one.
One month. So, so the work is going to be done, Mr. Mayor, through you to the National Grid representative? So the work's going to done, going to be done at night or?
No, that work is occurring during the day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Motion to refer the wire inspector for report and recommendation by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Drinkwater. All those in favor? Communications to the city manager. Motion response A, Moore School HVAC. Any questions? Council Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm sorry I missed the, being in the chamber. I have a situation at home. I had to be present. I want to thank city manager Christine and Catherine Moses for responding to this request in a timely manner. And thank you also for including the stock loss of school as part of this study. And on the issue with the controller for the EMS at Moore School, I understand that most of it has been fixed and that there's additional punch list to be completed September 30th of this year of what was included in the punch list that needs to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to, I believe Catherine Moses as well as Kristi McCall are available. Kristi McCall is here. Perhaps she can answer that question. I do know, as, as Council Chow did mention, most of the work, the work will be finished by the end of September, but most has been done.
Yeah, so Catherine can speak to the specific punch list items, but that's where we're at at the project. Is she on the Zoom?
Can Catherine be led into?
Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Yes, so right now, we're actually trying to get a comprehensive list of the remaining punch list items. I know that all of the major controllers have been completed and fixed. And so we're trying to make sure that those controllers and the associated equipment around them are functioning correctly so that we can actually have our equipment and our controls over temperatures and set points and different things like that. I'm happy to provide the council with additional updates in the future.
Could I just ask you to speak up a little louder? Sorry. It's hard to hear in here.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, a little bit better. Yep.
Okay, I apologize. We have not received a comprehensive list of remaining deficiencies that might need to be corrected as part of the punch list, but we expect that to be coming within the next week or so, so that we can create a plan to ensure that the work that we have done will allow for the energy-saving components and the operational efficiencies and occupancy comfort that we have. I'm happy to update the council further as we get that information. As part of this project, there will also be monthly reports that are done on the energy and on other issues within the system. And I'm happy to continue to provide those reports as well. But we're trying to make sure that the things that we're doing will have long-lasting impacts, not only on the occupancy comfort, but also on the energy use within the facility. Did that answer your question, Council Chow?
Yes, thank you, Catherine. And another positive things about what you are doing now with energy saving is that from this fixing of that controller, you know, I'm going to skip the kilowatt hours and things like that, I speak in terms of dollar amount. Once the project is complete or once the control is completely fixed, we're saving about $30,000 a year just for, from saving energy. So that's another great added benefit. It's just that I'm not a mechanical person. I know that most of the devices or fixtures of the controller have been fixed. Have you tested out yet in a school when you turn on, for example, you turn on the AC, is the AC working through the entire building right now? Or would it need until September 30th to be completely working?
That's an excellent question. First of all, I just want to make sure you can hear me. Am I speaking loudly enough? They can.
Yes.
So we believe that by fixing the major controls, that we'll be able to tell what is reporting to the controller downstream. So there might be instances where there is additional equipment downstream from the controller that we didn't know might need additional fixes until we got the controller operational. I know that advanced metering was also put into here so you can actually see electrical loads on different panels. And so if there are problems, if there are problems with the AC, if there are problems with heating, once we get into the heating season, we should be able to better identify those and find ways to make sure that the whole system is able to be integrated. It might require, depending on what we find, once we have more data on the controllers, it might require additional work. But we do have some systems in place to make that work as cost-effective as possible while still keeping in mind the energy savings.
Thank you so much. Excellent report. And maybe after September 30th, we can actually come back and make a final report, see after everything's fixed, to see if it's worked properly or not. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Council Rourke.
Yeah, a quick question for anybody that can answer it. So two weeks ago, it was 97 degrees in the gym and kids were passing out running around. Has that been fixed? It's an easy question.
I believe that those kinds of issues should be fixed with the additional controls that we have. I am not sure of that because I haven't received the final deficiency list, but I can get a more definitive answer for you before or after.
We can try and find out. Christine Clancy would know, but unfortunately Christine Clancy's on vacation. But we will, we'll follow up with TPW tomorrow.
Three weeks, and I have a full school there. And this has been going on there for multiple years now.
Right.
I got a picture just 10 days ago, and the thermostat read 97 degrees. And it'd take a couple of kids out of there. So I mean, this is like basic stuff that should be taken care of. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions on this motion? Motion response B. I think we have a registered speaker.
Sandra McNamara.
I don't know where to start because I am so furious at waste management.
I don't know where to start, 'cause I am so furious at waste management. I'm sitting in my car Monday, Waste Management Day, truck goes right by, so now I dial Waste Management. About 20 minutes later, truck comes up the opposite side of the street. Now the truck and I are side by side. I look up at the guy and scream and say, "Don't forget mine behind me." What's he do? Drive off. So now I'm still on Waste Management. 45 minutes, still waiting. Over an hour, finally they pick up. I talk to a gentleman, get halfway through the conversation, and he asks me to hold. So I said, "Okay." Disconnect. Tried to call back, same thing. At that point, I wasn't waiting over an hour. Called Tuesday, same exact thing. Wait over an hour, finally somebody picks up and hangs up. Same thing today. Wait over an hour. Finally somebody picks up and hangs up. No communication whatsoever with them, and I have my phone rackets, you can look at them. I just, I just don't understand. I'm that ticked off that that gentleman, we looked face to face, and there was no reason why the guy in the back couldn't just empty mine. Now it's sitting there, it smells, it's wet, and it's gonna be there another two weeks, 'cause I'm not moving it. The guy on Monday that took my information, I figured but for sure a truck would come back, or they would do it on Tuesday. Not a soul, haven't seen anybody. So at this point, I just don't know what to do with them. Stop paying my bill, maybe? That might trigger Waste Management? I don't know.
So, Sandy, we will certainly take care of that tomorrow. When you said you called Waste Management, were you calling, were you calling the Waste Management Coordinator in the city, or were you calling Waste Management directly?
Waste Management directly.
Yeah.
I didn't know there was a coordinator in the city.
We do have that, but you know, anytime there's an issue, just call, call my office. We deal with that, you know, when there are these, you know, people who've been missed, we make sure that someone gets there, so.
Sure, and I understand that, but I shouldn't have to bother your office. It should've been the process of that nice gentleman on the truck, that I wanna call him something different today, but should've just, it, two seconds. Alright, sorry we missed, 'cause we, I'm on the corner. We zoomed around the corner. Any excuse what it did, just take the barrel and who cares?
Right.
But he was not taking it, so it's still there.
Well, we'll, we know where you live, Sandy, we'll make sure we get someone out there tomorrow, but if this ever happens, don't hesitate to call us. There is, we do have a coordinator at DPW who does interface with Waste Management several times a day, but, and it's probably more efficient, you know, I'm not making excuses.
No, 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 but how many people actually know that and just do the same as I did and call Waste Management themselves? 'Cause the numbers are on the truck, you know what I mean?
Right, no, I know.
And then to get, same thing, three days in a row. I'll bet you if I put it on my phone right now, it's, same thing will happen by the time the end of this meeting is over, you'll hear a click, so, and I don't know why, but it, and it's a direct number right to them. It's the number that's online, it's the number on their trucks.
We'll make sure.
There's just no reason why it should happen to anybody.
Agreed.
The hang-up is worse than them not taking my barrel.
Well...
In my eyes. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any motion, Councilor Elliott?
No, the report's pretty comprehensive. It does list 10 steps that the Waste Management has taken to implement the hiring of new drivers. That's one of the big lapses, but in Sandy McNamara's case, that's certainly not acceptable. So no, it's, it's at least positive news, or at least some direction that's gonna take place, let's keep our fingers crossed that all these drivers are in fact hired, signing bonuses, educational reimbursement. I did wanna ask, so Madam Manager, the city has already proceeded with starting to pick up some of the parks, right? There is, there is a packer truck, I know one is coming, but I think that is some relief, because there, this report indicates that there is an amendment to the contract. They're not gonna do the parks, they can't keep up with it, but the city's plan is to make sure the parks are clean.
That's correct, and so, we've been using our own truck right now, we do have an agreement, as is reflected, to amend the contract to, until our truck comes in, which now doesn't look like it will be till next June, next spring sometime, to have a truck from them for, for free, without leasing, or maybe it's a dollar, but, and, and then we will have two. Our truck that we own is, is kind of old, but this would give us trucks to be able to keep up with the parks. It was important that that's something that DPW felt they could take on and do, and do a better job, certainly than Waste Management was doing, and we asked them, we had the credit to the contract as a result of that, and asked them to focus on what they're supposed to be doing in terms of the residential, both, you know, solid waste, recycling, and yard waste.
Okay, and lastly, we are finding, not that it matters when you have trash, it's almost insignificant when you have yard waste on your outside for two weeks, but we are finding Waste Management, and secondly, there is part of the recovery plan, people can go to the website, there is, according to the report, GPS output of the actual routes traveled on that day, which, if you can, you know, if you're technologically capable, then that's, I think that's a good service anyway. And lastly, there is a schedule, the week of eight, nine will be a green week for yard waste, so there, there is some information for those that, including us, that when we get calls, what's the status, when is it gonna be picked up, et cetera, so.
And we are keeping daily contact with them, to know what they, what they missed, if they are running late, if a truck broke down, so we can double-check on every single thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Rourke, Councilor Conway, Councilor Mercy?
Thank you. So Madam Manager, have we started that yet, with we're picking up the parks? City garages involved in that as well? The trash bins that are outside of city-owned garages?
I don't know about the city garages, the parks. I'll have to check on the, on the city garages. I think that still is part of Waste Management, but I'll double-check.
And is there a schedule set for the parks as well? Is it semi, like, three times a week, twice a week? Is there a set schedule for when they go by certain parks?
I, I think they are trying to do them twice a week, but the problem is, for instance, when there's a big tournament or something, which I think happened out at McPherson, of the soccer tournament, so they had been there, like, on a Friday the day before, and then it explodes over the weekend, they come back, so, you know, people are kind of, it's almost like parties, we've picked up bags and bags of trash that are left, pizza boxes and everything from the hundreds of people that are using it. So we're doing the best we can. I think getting this other truck is going to help as well. A lot of it is COVID, you know, a lot of it is just more people using, using the parks, so the, the amount of trash is, is pretty significant that, that it's up, so. So I think between using our own older packer truck and now this new truck is gonna, is gonna show, you know, and give us some, some relief, so.
Is there any thought of adding more barrels to the parks? Putting a couple more out?
Yeah, we can, we can check. I don't think that's, I haven't heard that, but we can check into that.
You know, and I've, you know, worn out the assistant city manager's phone with phone calls about, you know, trash pickup at, at certain areas, and I will say that the city has been terrific. When someone has waited a week, or, you know, or longer for a Waste Management, either a large item pickup, or the yard waste is not picked up, and the city has been terrific in attending to that right away, so, you know, the problem really does lie, unfortunately, with Waste Management, but, you know, to Sandy's point, or Miss McNamara's point, you know, you shouldn't have to, you know, call and, and, you know, bother your administration, it was much more important work than, you know, stuff like this, right? So hopefully, sooner rather than later, it gets fixed, so thank you.
I, I agree. I, I just, you know, whether it's Sandy or anybody else, I would urge them to call us locally, 'cause we can try and get to them a lot quicker. I'm afraid if they call the corporate number, I don't know what happens, so. Well, we know what happens if Sandy just called us.
Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, I wanna thank you and Christine Clancy for the report here. I, I will say that it's, it's great to see, as far as I'm concerned, I think it's great to see some type of action that's taken. We have seen and heard on this floor time and time again, the issues and the problems that customers in the, in the city are faced with every single week, and nobody escapes it, and I think that there's a tremendous amount of frustration, and when I see this now, I see that there are, you know, it's something concrete, there's a plan that's finally, it's long overdue, and it's finally here, and I certainly hope that, I hope that these, these, these points that are put into place here actually do work, and I, and I, I applaud them for, you know, for stepping up, because you just can't keep on, every single week, we're talking about the same thing. So, again, I, I look forward to some real positive changes here, and let's just hope for the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mercy, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, manager Donahue, could you please put down 291 Summer Street? We had recycling, and, and this is the second week that they haven't picked it up. Now this, tomorrow is when they would pick it up, but, but we can't put it out again, because they're not coming tomorrow, it's not our turn, and, and we just, we have three barrels out there, and they're all full, and there's nobody that's coming for it. I think they're afraid that the street is blocked off and they can't get through, but they can get through. Maybe there's a new driver on the truck, 'cause the other driver comes through, maybe it's a new driver and he just said he can't get through, so.
We will follow up with them.
Thank you so much.
They have started new drivers, obviously, so.
That's probably what it is.
And let, let me just say to Sandy and anybody else, the local number, our local number here is 978-674-4309. If someone's missed a pickup, you know, that's, that's our solid waste and recycling number here at DPW, and they have direct connect to Waste Management.
Thank you. Councilor Chow, and then Councilor Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Madam Manager, thank you for the report, and I know that, you know, the steps are, are taking place. Actually, before I continue, I just wanna thank you and your office staff, actually, for responding to many of the local requests, and your staff has been excellent responding to the requests immediately, so that local numbers is very, very important, very useful. With, with that said, I just wanna ask a quick question, what Councilor Elliott was alluding to earlier, I know there's a fine has been, has been initiated to collect $46,000 in, in fine. What is the chance of collecting that, that money, that funds, and what will that funds be applied towards? Would it be for, either for, for the trucks, or what, what are your plans for, for that funds?
Madam Manager?
Yes, so, so the, it, it would be in accounting, we would, working through this, would likely be a credit, because of the cost that we pay them, so it's, it's really more of a credit off of what we would otherwise pay, pay them. I know there are negotiations around that, the, the truck that I mentioned, and I'm not sure where that stands, but, but we can let the council know about that, but as far as, we wouldn't actually technically have to collect from them, and we would deduct from what we owe them.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Samaras?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the city manager, I wanna thank you for this report, it's a good, a good report, it's a solid report, and it does speak to the problems that COVID has created for many of the industries like this. But we talked about, I think the last time this issue was brought up, that a lot of people would be, it would help them if, say on Tuesday, the trucks didn't come by, that they can go on-site and see if the trucks are gonna come by on Wednesday, rather than having to call the city, but as you said at the last meeting, that the website, the recycling website, as well as the LOL Recycle sites are updated, but how are we getting that information to the public, to the people, so they know how to get on this? Is there any way we can read that?
So, one of the, one of, I think the most efficient ways for people to know is to download the app, and it would be right on your phone, and you can see what your next pickup is, what you recycle, and if there's going to be a delay in your neighborhood, that's updated in real time. So, the, honestly, I put this app on my phone back when Gunther Wellenstein was here, but it's the LOL Recycles app that you download.
No, it, it's terrific, 'cause when the city does get involved, if people call the city, there is a good reaction from the city, but the thing is, I'm surprised at how many people, you, you talk to them about the apps and what have you, and I'm not that great at telling people how to use these type of tools, but is there any better way we can get that information out?
Yeah, we, we, we put it on the website, we can certainly do, we'll, we'll try and figure out a way to, to get it out there, because, I mean, I'm looking right now, and it, you know, if I wanted to know yard waste or trash or recycling, well, you know, today was recycling and trash, next week is yard waste and trash, but it will tell me if they're running late, so. I think that's the handiest, you don't even have to go online to search for it, you just pull it up on your own phone, and...
You got a process that works, and the shame of it, a lot of people that might complain.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's called LOL Recycle, is the name of the app, and so you'd go to your app store and, and search for LOL Recycle and just download it. It's free, and you would be able to have it very handy for, for your convenience, but, you know, we'll try and push that out again somehow, so that people have that information.
Thank you. Councilor Noon, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I join everyone in thanking you and the DPDW for the report. I also concur with my fellow councillor that this report provide a concrete recovery plan to address this ongoing issue. What I'd like to know is that with the park trash pickup, I know that the DPW staff ought to know which park in the city is most busy or most used. Therefore, I think they, they ought to schedule their pickup accordingly, particularly with McPherson Park, you know, a couple days ago. I mean, you can see the overflow of trash, and that shouldn't not happen. If they, you know, be able to identify which park is most used and schedule their pickup accordingly, I think going forward, they, they ought to do that.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the Parks Department does try and keep track and, and go to the parks. At, at some point, we may want to ask the Board of Parks if there's going to be a big tournament, the organizers of a tournament should have some process for, you know, carry in, carry out for the trash that they're generating. This isn't people just using the park, you know, for recreation. These are people who, you know, get permission to use parks, they bring in hundreds of people from outside the city, and it's very difficult to keep up with that amount of trash. Doesn't happen all the time, but it's just, when you have big events, I think we have to start thinking a little more strategically as to how those types of big events should be handled, especially with the city taking over, because we have over 93 parks in the city, and, you know, we're doing the best to try and keep all of them clean, but when you have organized events that people are registering and paying to use, there should be some plan by the organizers for taking care of their own trash that's generated, so just something that we're looking into.
I, I think that, that's, that, I think, you know, communication with the Board of Park helpful also, that this individual that do the pickup, trash pickup in the park, communicate with the Board of Park, or the Board of Park communicate with this individual, so that, you know, when the event happened, they know where to go after, right after, take care of, so that we don't have the overflow that we did. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? Any questions on motion C, Pataqueville Oil Spots? Councilor Elliott or Councilor Rourke? Councilor Elliott?
No, the motion, thank you for, for the response on the motion. They look like oil sp- They look like oil spots. I'm glad they're not because if they were, then our streets would be a mess. And it's just the trucks that, because of the delayed yard waste pickup, the streets, it's almost every street that has these, what seemingly look like oil spills, but they're not. So thank you for the report and hopefully Mother Nature will take care of it. I mean, the report, it does happen occasionally.
Yep. Madam Manager?
Yeah, it is important that it be reported. I know in this case, because it was reported in a timely manner, they were able to go out and also track the truck because it's possible the truck could have an oil leak. And we need to, you know, catch it, you know, at that point in time because they're responsible for that. So we are, you know, grateful that people will, you know, I know Councilor Rourke and yourself contacted us so that we can check it out. And especially where it's identified as one of Waste Management's trucks. We want to know if there's something defective and if there's oil being leaked because, you know, that can be a big cleanup.
Thank you. Councilor Rourke, any questions?
Just a thank you to the DPW department and again, the Assistant City Manager. Tuesday morning is when I actually first called and he got right on it and took care of it within a day, so thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on response D, the Sanders Tree? Councilor Noon, any questions?
Thank you, madam. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Manager, for addressing the concern of the tree, the branch on 314 Sander Ave. The resident are very happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on response E, Pastor Conway Memorial Restoration? Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been noticed already, Madam Manager. I've just, I've gotten a couple of texts actually, so DPW did a great job in this monument right on VFW Highway dedicated to Pastor Conway. So it looks good, it's been noticed and it's been taken care of. Thanks to DPW.
Thank you. Any questions on motion response E, F or G? F's all set. G, any questions on that? Councilor Elliott? Oh, Matt, Councilor Mercy?
I have questions on the cameras on top of City Hall or whatever. I don't have a problem with what you want to do, but the fact is, we need cameras in City Hall and I don't know why we don't have any. That should be the priority to get them inside here. You never know when someone's going to run amok or whatever. You never know if I'm going to do that. No, I'm only kidding, but anyway.
Yeah, we are looking at a whole security system.
Sure, thank you. And another thing about City Hall, if I could just mention it, I was talking to a firefighter the other day and he said, isn't it amazing that this is such a beautiful building and there are no fire sprinklers? If anything should happen to this building, we don't have any sprinkler system in here. Now, that's a concern to me. I mean, I hate to say it, but that's what I was concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Conway?
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. I'm just a little confused with something. Maybe you can clear it up on this. The cameras, how are they monitored? How are these cameras monitored? Who monitors them and is there information that's available? And if so, where and who stores?
Yeah, we don't have the cameras yet.
Right, but I'm just saying, what?
This is through the police department and the police department contract that will, so once we have those in place, the quick answer is, is the police department. But we can get you more detail once they're in place.
And will they store whatever information that's available in there or will they?
I would suspect so.
Okay.
Because they have a system there and this is a continuation of the system.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on motion G, cash money? Councilor Elliott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report, Madam Solicitor. The motion was to explore utilizing a portion of the stimulus money, 50 million to the city toward real estate payments. And as we continue to wade through this 300 pages of guidance, unfortunately, it's not possible to use money for direct real estate payments. However, as provided by the solicitor, an alternative to providing funds towards overdue real estate payments, the city may offer direct assistance to households or populations facing negative economic impacts as a result of COVID. So I think that's good news. Another reason why I supported that position, these are, these are the avenues that we have to explore and to find options or alternative because people need help with their real estate payments. It's not legal, however, it's permissible, excuse me, but there is an alternative. So thank you for the response. I think that's, you know, moving forward. People at home know that there will be once we start getting the money. Have we gotten any money? Is it starting to flow?
We have gotten the first allotment of, not the, we haven't yet gotten the county portion, but we've gotten one half. So it's coming in one half allotments, one half this year, one half next year.
Okay, so, I mean, they can be cash transfers for unemployed workers, low to moderate income families who have faced disproportionate economic harms. I'm just reading from the report, so I'm not going to read all this. It's good news and I'm sure once we get into the public input, participation and planning, this will be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? Councilor Chow, any questions on veterans banners?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Madam Manager and Eric Lamarche. Thank you, Madam Manager and Eric Lamarche for the report. It sounds like other communities, other towns and cities, they have been doing a successful veteran banners program and they're working with cooperation with other departments within the city. Just a question, I understand that LOL does not have this banner program yet and if you were to start it for the first time, Mr. Lamarche, how long would it take? How many months would it take to start this program for the first time?
I would, I would say that I could get this up and running by next May. I think in the report, we stated that we would probably be wise to have it from Memorial Day going all the way to just after Veterans Day. But I think by next Memorial Day, we'd be able to get the program up and running. First, we'd get a work group together to discuss, you know, logistics, demographics, such as the cost, the payment process and the website. But I think we'd be able to deal with that.
Thank you. And you also mentioned in the report that, as I mentioned earlier, other towns, they have like parade committees, Veterans Council or Commission, which we have, they work with exchange clubs. What would it take if you were to implement this by next May, which I hope that we can do as a city, implement it by next year? What do you need, what are the departments, what do you need to work with you to make this successful?
I think that would be part of the work group. We definitely would need a, I probably have some questions for MIS just on how to set up the website and the finance part, actually the payment method online and probably another, somebody that has the equipment, a work truck that would be able to get up high enough on the poles.
If this is, if the council wants to pursue this, what we will do is put, as Mr. Lamarche has mentioned, we'll put together a working group so that we can pull together, it's probably going to be DPW, probably DPD will have some involvement and MIS for an application function, but also to try and identify locations of where the banners could be. We have many banners in the city, but, you know, is there one specific area and then how many those would be? So I think, you know, assuming that's the direction the council wants to go to, we'll put together that working group and bring back, you know, some report to the council as far as recommending how that should move forward. Certainly, Mr. Lamarche's office can look at, you know, the eligibility and so forth as far as veterans, but there's a lot of other logistics that are kind of beyond his department. So we would try and pull everybody together that needs to be at the table.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Manager, for that comment. And yes, I think with the approval of the council, I would like to see this being implemented for next year. Does it have to be in a form of motion or is it okay to say now, let's get this going for next year?
Yeah, it would seem to be reasonable that, you know, we can try and get the group together and then have it in place and certainly in enough time for, certainly in enough time for that to be implemented.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All set, council?
Yes.
Next motion response, motion I, Leroy Garage. Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very enthused with this report, which states that DPD is currently working on a solicitation for proposals from artists to implement a mural on the wall of the Leroy Garage. And I think that's, it's great news. I did just have a question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Madam Manager, just on the timeline. I know an RFP is being prepared for this. I don't know, is there a timeline for when the RFP will be complete, when applications are coming in and potentially a decision-making process?
I think Christine McCall is here to address that, councillor.
Thank you.
Sorry, councillor, I missed the first half of your question, but for the Leroy Garage, we, the city doesn't have funding to pay for a mural, so we are going to do an RFP for that wall. And we're going to ask that an artist, a group of artists, an organization or a management company can put together a proposal for, you know, we can just declare it as a wall for a mural. And they'd have to show us how they'd pay for it, how they'd install it, what their schedule is, and then what their call for art would look like. And we'll put details to make sure that preference is given to a LOL artist and that LOL artists are included in the selection committee if they're not actually submitting. And then I think you mentioned Art Up LOL in the motion. They are doing a call for mural art for three murals. It's my understanding that all three are actually private property, so they're going to work through the city ordinance and then go through the historic board. The call, the city's involvement is helping spread the word to the local artist community. I believe there are local artists on the selection committee, so, and preference will be given to LOL artists. But they have to demonstrate that they're able to do a project of this magnitude.
Thank you. Is there an idea of the timeline just for when, like, is there an application deadline? You know, understanding that applications would need to, you know, provide a source of funding or show that they have a source of funding, but is there, are there any deadlines currently for when, you know, applications would have to be submitted or when they're going to be considered?
For the Art Up, a call for art, I believe it's either August 16th or August 18th. And then I believe they're trying to move quickly to do these projects this fall. I think the RFP for Leroy, we'd have to think it would be a next spring or next summer project, just in terms of timeline. But I believe the Art Up projects, the intention is to make a selection quickly to start these projects this year.
That is my understanding and that's exciting as well, that they are trying to implement a number of murals on private walls by early fall or before the cold weather. I wasn't sure if this city RFP would be operating on a similar timeline. It sounds like it'll take a little bit more time, but just excited to hear that it'll be moving forward. So thank you.
Any other questions on this? Next motion, we have registered speaker, Community Choice Aggregation.
Jay Mason. City Manager, council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jay Mason. I live at 415 Potteck Street, unit number one. I just wanted to quickly say that we've had a terrific success with probably the highest success in the state with this program, the CCA. We achieved 45% clean energy for the 26-month duration of our contract, spending less dollars than we would have spent if we'd had no additional clean energy. So it's a really great program. We've got some challenges ahead and we're going to have to look at it and see to do the best that we can with this program. And I just essentially wanted to kind of give a nod to Robert Mills. He said earlier that LOL has people creating things to change the world. And this is exactly what we're trying to do. We're trying to change the world to a more healthful, more beneficent future for ourselves. And this is something really important. If you looked at the globe in the last couple of days, we're looking at enormous issues with climate change. So this is a way that we can address it. We can start right here in our community and we can do the things that need to be done, you know, one step at a time. So thank you for considering this work and that's really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Grossman.
You're all set? Thank you. Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot of information here in this report and, you know, thank you, Madam Manager, for the comprehensive report. You know, one of the challenges that is mentioned in here is something that's relatively out of our control and that is just a recent spike in the price of natural gas, leading to a spike in the price of electricity. So when you look at some of the numbers that are included here, you look a little bit higher than in the last aggregate agreement. I'm hoping that's something over the coming months. I know price has been all over the place as a result of, you know, the pandemic and supply constraints, so I'm not sure if they might look, you know, a little bit different as the process goes on. I know this is a decision that will play out in the coming months in terms of securing another aggregate agreement. And I just had a question through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, you know, if it was the council's wish to make a recommendation on, you know, the amount of clean renewable energy that's included in the next aggregation agreement as was made last time, what would the timeline be in terms of trying to make that recommendation before, you know, the city has to engage in terms of, you know, soliciting bids and putting out the amount of clean energy that we want?
So I think Catherine is on, Catherine Moses, the, you know, it might be a good idea to send this to a subcommittee to have more thorough discussion around, especially around, you know, questions like that, you know, to determine what is the will of council? What is the ratio that you want to have the city working with the consultant to say what's the best approach? Again, I don't know if Catherine's right there, but Christine, I don't know if, so it might make sense to have this issue because we do have a few months to send it to a subcommittee.
Yeah, we renew our contract in December, so that would, we would be doing the new rates after that. And so, yeah, we have time to go to a subcommittee to hear more from the council, if that is the wish.
I would expect that certainly they're going to look to the markets and advise on what's happening. But if there's, you know, some goals in mind, then, you know, it would be good to have that kind of direction conversation. So I think that's probably something, bringing the consultant to the subcommittee might be helpful.
Thank you. I think that's a, that's a great idea. You know, certainly as a goal, I am hoping that we can, you know, keep our current commitment to clean energy that we had in the last aggregation agreement. And I think this is a good suggestion, so I would move that this be referred to the Technology and Utilities Subcommittee for a meeting. And if the consultant is able, available to attend, I think that would be very beneficial.
Motion by Councilor Drinkwater. Second by Councilor Noon. Any other questions on this? Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, I agree with Councilor Drinkwater. This is a good report. And so if we, you know, when we send this to the Subcommittee Utilities and Technology Subcommittee, we probably want to invite the consultant to produce a report that show how many, you know, rack going to be purchased to meet the aggregation demand. And also opportunity too for those members of the Sustainability Subcommittee to provide, you know, input as to, you know, what would be the best going forward. Because the goal is to get the most cheapest energy possible for our resident and also looking for as much as green renewable for the city as well. So I'm looking forward to that Subcommittee. So as soon as the clerk can meet that schedule, we will have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Anything, Christine? No? No? Anything, Christine? No. No, I think the last time we were, you know, a leader in the state for, you know, our portfolio, and it would be great to try and keep up that role when it comes to renewables, so.
Thank you. Watercraft on the Merrimack River, Counselor Mercy, any questions?
I'm surprised to see this right here, because I don't know that it's my motion. I had this motion on a year ago, unless I'm just getting the response now, but are you sure that wasn't somebody else's?
We can share the motion.
Sure.
I did put it on a few weeks ago, so thank you, Counselor. I'm pleased, and I'm sure residents of there are pleased, to see the number of enforcement actions that have taken place, and the patrols on Saturday and Sunday. And we're also part of the Merrimack River Task Force, which consists of Chelmsford Police, Tingsborough Police, Mass Environmental Police. So the numbers have been significantly lower with the jet skis in that basin where there were two fatalities. And 35 wave runners have had voyages terminated or removed from the river, three boats. There's been 73 verbal warnings and 11 citations. So hopefully the message gets out there, and I appreciate the effort. We're saving lives. It's just, it gets reckless up there. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mercy, and then Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that Counselor Elliott brought up this motion again, because as you know, I did have trouble at the end of the street. But the very last paragraph talks about the Merrimack River Task Force, and it mentions Chelmsford and Tingsborough, the police departments. But there also is a boat ramp in Methuen, and we not including Methuen, because that, they launch their boats and ski mobiles and, I mean, ski doos or whatever the watercrafts, and then they come down 110 to the areas of the streets by the end of Burnham Road. It hasn't been really bad this year, so I didn't receive any calls. But that should be monitored in that area as well, when you get a complaint. I haven't had any, so we don't need to. But Methuen does have a boat ramp, and it's not always monitored, and they know that Lowell is very strict, so they come up here to Methuen, and then they come down 110 and cause havoc with the neighbors that are butting those streets to the water. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last council meeting, I filed similar motion with Counselor Elliott, and thank you for the report. And happy to see that Lowell Police Department is a member of this Merrimack River Task Force that working on enforcing and as well as, you know, coordinating with other city and towns. So it's a good thing that we start doing it, that we're doing it, and that we have been ticketing and, you know, find people already, which is a very good start. Thank you.
Thank you. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Rourke. All those in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Counselor Mercy?
If it would be possible, I'd like to suspend the rules and ask that we bundle all the communications, 62, 63, 64, and 65. They do require city council vote, but if you could just, unless someone is here that wants to be recognized, it's a new, that is a new person on the Sustainability Council, I don't know if there is, but if we could just bundle that.
Sure. Yeah. Motion by Counselor Mercy, a second by Counselor Noon to bundle 62 to 65.
Right.
62, communication, appoint Mary Warru Wambi to the Sustainable Council. Communication, appoint Anna Krista Forgazo to the Sustainability Council. Communication, appoint Winfren Flint to the Sustainability Council. And communication, city manager requests out-of-state travel by LPD. Motion to adopt. Roll call?
Need a motion.
Oh, yeah. Motion by Counselor Mercy, a second by Counselor Samaras. Roll call?
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Seven vote, transfer 85,000 to Cultural Affairs and Special Events. Mission to waive the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Vote, City Council Lowell. City Council vote, transfer from the city manager's contingency budget more fully described in the attached transfer form to salary and wages permanent for the Cultural Affairs Special Events Director. Any questions? Motion by Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Drinkwater to adopt. Roll call?
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Ordinance is from the city manager. Ordinance, create a position, salary, SOR, PEC, grant coordinator in Health Department. So need a motion to refer to a public hearing on August 24, 21, 2021 at 7:00 PM by Counsel Rourke, second by Counsel Samaras.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
If we could take a motion out of order, we have a downtown business owner that has to get to work, so I'd like to just call 11-7 if we could.
Sure. Motion to take a motion out of order by Counsel Rourke, second by Counsel Mercy, 11-7. Yeah. Counsel Mercy and Counsel Rourke, request city manager have police back Central Street, back Central Neighborhood Group leaders, residents and business owners of Gorm Street area meet to discuss issues that affect the quality of people's lives in the neighborhood. We have Registered Speaker?
Richard Healy.
Thank you. I want to thank Counselor Rourke in particular for letting me know this was going on tonight. I think we were talking about the convenience store and the food setup that's right by our business, at 110 Gorm Street, and just the changes that hopefully everyone wants to see in the neighborhood. But that area in particular should be somewhat of a focal point. I believe when we talked over the phone, it was about a community meeting kind of going on right there. It's the first thing you see, you get off the connector. It's kind of the last thing you see when you get onto the connector. And though it's been better in the past couple of weeks, there's definitely been some cleanup efforts. You can tell that local law enforcement is there a little bit more as well. It's still a gigantic eyesore. And it's not just because of the physical condition, but it's because of just some of the people who spend their time there. Before I came over today, I was there, and right by the Armenian genocide monument, there's somebody, you know, who's sleeping one off in a propped-up chair. There are five or six people fighting pretty loudly, and then, you know, they'll ride off on stolen bikes. I've been offered to, you know, buy car radios from somebody when I've pulled in to buy, like, bottles of water for the staff or anything else, which I don't know still happened. And then, you know, just other various things. It's kind of a bit of a seedy area, and I know residents aren't exactly thrilled about it, and I know that other business owners aren't exactly thrilled about it. So anything in terms of getting people out there to see it in the day, you know, and during the day when it's really at its high point, would be eye-opening for a lot of people who I think make decisions about that area. That area itself is, you know, somewhat of a developing area, kind of on the outskirts of downtown, and I think it needs a little bit more focus. And to start with pain points like that may be better for everybody. Thank you for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Counselor Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, meaning Counselor Rourke and I, we bring this motion forward to compile an on-the-road neighborhood Subcommittee in the back Central Gorm Street area to address the neighborhood issues with the residents concerning trash being spread all over, excrement, you name it. They have concerns, and I believe this motion is going to be referred, if possible, to the neighborhood Subcommittee.
Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Mercy as well. So I got a couple of phone calls, and we were asked to go down to take a walk of the area. The woman I spoke to at Jerry's Food Store said she had paid someone to come in and clean up her parking lot, the whole area that's right there. And this was Saturday morning, and it was filthy again. You know, and there are, you know, people that were sleeping in the middle of the parking lot and things like that, you know, people that we talked about before need help. You know, so they, and I talked to a couple of people I know that live in that neighborhood that are afraid to leave their house to go to the food store, right? So, you know, it's something that I know that the council and the manager have been dealing with for a long time. But, you know, it was outreach made to myself and the Counsel Mercy to see if we can get inspection services down there and a police department, you know, maybe someone from the manager's office, to really see what's going on down there. I know Mr. Healy has been in front of the council multiple times, talking about his establishment. You remember that Veterans Club, that's definitely him as well, has been outspoken. And, you know, it really is time to see what we can do over there. You know, the South Carmen is in the same neighborhood, if you want to go up the street a little bit, you know, and there's a lot of problems going on there as well. You know, we could talk about all we want, but you gotta try to put some kind of action plan together, and hopefully, you know, this here can start to, you know, force some solutions. Thank you. You know, Madam Manager, I could be in contact with you, and whenever you get everybody together on the same date, you know, they're waiting for it, so thank you.
All those in favor of the motion say aye. Did you want to send that to the Subcommittee?
Yes, I'd like to refer this motion to the neighborhood Subcommittee. And if we could have an inspector such as Sean Machado there, it would be very helpful. Thank you.
And just really quick, Mr. Mayor, you know, so in talking to Mr. Machado, you know, the owners of the businesses there, Lowell Auto School, The Keep, you know, Jerry's, they are constantly cleaning up their property, cleaning up their area, you know? And Mr. Machado's credit, you know, he's not fining them, he's not, you know, he understands the situation, you know, that they're in down there. So, you know, hopefully there's something that can be done, just, you know, to fix it once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to the agenda. Are there any Subcommittee reports? Municipal facilities, Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The municipal facility Subcommittee met jointly with the municipal facility Subcommittee of the school committee. Back on July 28th, there were actually several motions that had been referred to the joint committee from both the city council and from the school committee. So there are a few different topics. One of the main topics that was discussed on that night was just an update regarding the flooding that had occurred at the high school and checking in on the remediation and restoration process there. As I think everyone is aware, on June 14th was when water was discovered after approximately 30 hours of flooding at the high school. Since then, the broken pipe has been repaired, and Commissioner Clancy from the DPW had offered this update that at the time of the meeting on the 28th, Service Master had been contracted to do the remediation efforts, which were just being completed at that time. So that was the dry-out and demolition efforts. And as the remediation process was being completed, a repair plan for the damaged areas was being put together, which were the, you know, the arts band and chorus area. It also included engineering and special education classrooms. So the, as a repair plan was put together, the city had received a waiver from DCAM to expedite the bidding process, which was certainly a good thing. And at the time of the meeting, I think that the process and the contract was being finalized, and work was hopefully set to begin during the first week in August. Update was given that most classrooms should be prepared by August 30th for the start of school, although some, including the band and chorus area, were going to take a little bit more time with the target date of September 25th, which will involve some planning just to utilize other classroom space for the band and chorus curriculum. Fire Chief Phil Sharon was also present to give an update on the fire suppression system in the high school, which was where the pipe breakage had occurred. He updated that in somewhat unfortunate circumstance, the area where the pipe breakage had occurred was just beyond the main, the water main valve from the street, where a loss in pressure could have potentially been detected by the water department. It was past that point, yet before the point where there was a clapper valve and a sensor that would have alerted a loss in water pressure to the fire department through the alarm system. So it was, you know, somewhat unfortunate, the area in which the breakage had occurred was not censored, and therefore didn't alarm, you know, either department at the time of the breakage. So one thing that was discussed was whether a sensor could be added at that point in the fire suppression system. So in the future, in the high school or in other municipal buildings, if a breakage occurs in the area where it wouldn't normally be detected by the water department, wouldn't normally be detected by the fire department, if sensors could be added to that area of piping, so that there would at least be some sort of alarm where someone would be notified within, hopefully, minutes of that breakage occurring. So I know that is being looked at by both DPW and the fire department currently to, and I know there were some regulations related to national fire suppression system regulations that had to be looked at, make sure additional sensors would be compliant with that. But a motion was made by the Joint Subcommittee to get a report from DPW and the fire department about the possibility of procuring and installing additional sensors in our, in our both fire suppression and other water flow systems, including plumbing, just to make sure we're doing everything we possibly can to make sure we're alarmed quickly in the event of a breakage. There was also another motion that had been referred to the Joint Subcommittee that was discussed related to procuring shades and screens in schools. One of the reasons this was brought up was because obviously it is a public health concern. We want to make sure there's airflow and ventilation within classrooms and to be able to, you know, open windows that they're operable, and also that there's shade to be sure that, you know, rooms can be kept cool. So a, the school department had looked into the cost of procuring all shades and screens for any windows that were needed. The overall cost to replace and repair all broken shades and screens in the schools was a total of over $300,000. And, you know, there is a procurement that is happening and ongoing to be able to get the materials. That update was provided by Commissioner Clancy, once again, from the DPW. Also just wanted to mention a couple other updates on work that's happening overall on our school facilities. The DPW is working on a classroom readiness assessment in conjunction with the school department to make sure that, you know, classrooms and buildings are prepared for the return to school. And also, another notable thing is that the, an RFP is being prepared for an HVAC facilities assessment that will result in a set of recommendations from an HVAC engineer that can then be acted on to make sure we're addressing our HVAC systems in the schools. Finally, another update provided by Commissioner Clancy is that through a Green Communities Grant that was secured by the city, a number of improvements were made to HVAC control systems and thermostats in several schools to make them more energy efficient and also more comfortable in terms of temperature. So again, that funding was provided by a Green Communities Grant, and there's some additional funding provided from National Grid to do additional assessments on temperature control in schools. So a lot of information was provided that I probably didn't do complete justice to the list of updates and improvements that are ongoing that Commissioner Clancy had provided at that meeting, but a lot of good work happening. So I did at least just want to mention a few of the areas which were updated at the meeting. So apologize for the lengthy Subcommittee report, but there were multiple motions that were on the agenda that night, so just wanted to make sure, gave a complete summary. So the meeting was also, you know, attended by Subcommittee members. So the meeting was also, you know, attended by Subcommittee members, Councilors Chow and Rourke, as well as School Committee members, Dougherty, Dakota, and Dillon. So I don't know if any colleagues have anything to add. Hopefully I covered it, but I would welcome any other attendees to chime in.
Thank you. Any questions on the report? Motion accepted, report of progress by Council Drinkwater, seconded by Council Elliot. All those in favor? Neighborhood Subcommittee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Tuesday, August 3rd, we had a Neighborhood Services Subcommittee concerning some sanitation issues in Patteckerville. In attendance was myself, Council Mercia, Council Noon, as well as Council Elliot from the city, our DPD Director, Christine McCall, Eric Slago, Deputy Director, and also Dave Fuller, our Building Inspector for the city. The motion came about, you know, for the meeting, I had up to 10 neighbors contact me about, you know, certain homes in the area and also a increasing rat problem over in a certain part of Patteckerville, the Fourth Ave, Drakehead, Endicott, Farragut Street area. We had a couple of residents that had spoke to what they had witnessed and what was going on over there. Some discussion from Deputy Director Edward Slago for solutions, were maybe some outreach and looking into specific homes or houses, properties that accumulate more trash than normal. Motion was made by Council Mercia and also by Council Elliot, which I think is on the agenda for tonight. They can speak to that momentarily. But they did speak of, you know, obviously, you know, wood and garages in the area that have been eaten through and, you know, there was a home up in Drakehead that was, you know, dilapidated, that, you know, had filth inside of it, that, you know, DPD had reached out to the town in Drakehead to see if they could do something with it as well, if it was a source, a main source of where, you know, the infestation was coming from. And, you know, it was a good conversation back and forth of what can be done. You know, the phone numbers for Developmental Services were given, 978-974-4144. You know, anybody that does have this issue going on, they have been out there three times in the past two weeks, you know, checking things out and talking to the neighborhood. And obviously towards the, you know, the end of the meeting, you know, the waste pickup was always, you know, when it sits there for, you know, a week, you know, delay, that also increases the risk for, you know, for trash and infestation. So with that being said, I could pass it off to Councils Mercia and Elliot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we did discuss was all the trash that's not being picked up, absolutely that, but there's many factors that could lead to this rat infestation, which it frightens me to some degree. But we did talk about the students at UMass Lowell and they have a tendency to have parties or extra people over in the weekend and they're not that privy to put in the trash out when they should be, so it just accumulates and all this. And that was an issue that the inspector said could be possible as well. We had to look at all possibilities, so we did. And I made a motion, seconded by Council Noon, and Council Elliot did talk about the same issue and the same, we were all on the same thought line, thinking that we would ask if the city could send over a letter to UMass Lowell to provide, so that UMass Lowell could provide a letter to the campus students to inform them of this health risk of infestation and if they could take steps to assist to present, prevent further issues from happening, which I thought that they could be a good partner in trying to take care of in a timely manner to get their trash out. Because it's one thing to say that we're behind in it, but if they're not putting it out, it's partly their fault as well. So if the city could just request UMass Lowell to compile a letter that send to their students when they return back to school, which I'm sure they do, they send different notices as what the rules and regulations and maybe they could include something that says, please make sure you get rid of your trash in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Elliot?
Thank you. It was a good meeting, it was a good discussion for a standing problem in one particular area, but as we learned from Mr. Slago, and I think we get emails, there's also a problem in South Lowell, Nexusil Resum as a result of some construction. So learn more about rats than we care to learn, however, there seems to be some solution at hand. The students are one thing, when they, and it's trash. It's, you know, rats are going to go where there's food, so I thought it was, Council Mercia and I were on the same page. I thought the same thing, let's reach out to the university to see if we can get even just a notification that, you know, be careful, be cognizant if you're living off campus. We want to protect everybody from that health hazard. So I think, I think it was, I think it was Council Rourke that brought up, maybe just for the three or four weeks. I have a motion on that we have another building inspector, specifically, we just need more inspectors. And I think with the explosion of student housing in the Patteckerville area, it's not going to hurt. There's multiple violations. Ms. Monbly actually cited, who came to the meeting, talked about one particular location on Drakehead Street. And I don't know if Eric Slago has had a chance to get to that one yet, but I think there are some solutions, additional enforcement. I think enforcement is only going to make the difference, Madam Manager. I know we're short on building inspectors, but perhaps the, you know, short term, I know Mr. Slago is going to put this in the list, but considering the, I think it's the effects of COVID with more trash and then students coming back, there'll be more trash and it's just enforcement. Until we get our hands on this, the problem's not going to go away. So it was, it was a good meeting with, I think, some good suggestions from a standing problem. I mean, I've received complaints a number of years, a couple of years ago on Fourth Ave, people seeing rodents, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Those are two cents.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Just a quick update. Christine McCall is here. She has sent the letter to the UMass Lowell, so we'll follow up with them, asking them to communicate with their students, so.
Yeah, beginning of the season, I got a little blitz to let the students know and it's not just the students, there are some other people living in, you know, multifamily that are contributing to the problem, so.
Thank you. Need a motion accepted, report of progress by Council Rourke, seconded by Council Mercia. Economic Downtown Development Subcommittee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was held last Tuesday in response to a number of motions that were referred to the Economic Development Subcommittee, won by you, Mr. Mayor, on meeting with DPD and downtown business regarding the Rapid Recovery Plan. Motion by Council Mercia on what is the future of the downtown, the heart of the city, as well as motion discussion with DPD per Council Noon on a list of incentives and federal funding and tax programs that will encourage downtown business owners. So it was attended by myself, Council Drinkwater, and Council Chow, Christine McCall and her staff, Maria and Tom, and this report was distributed. It's an excellent report. I'm not going to go through the whole report, the minutes were included, but it does outline steps that we have taken, planning and development has taken. It's a three-phase implementation. It has a study area. It does have diagnostics on what the problems are, how can we address it? And by the way, interestingly enough, as we learned in the meeting, there's been 10 businesses that have opened downtown. I may not, it may not look at that way, but 10 businesses have opened down during the pandemic and there are more that are exploring downtown. So there were some key takeaways, and again, I'm not going to go through it. It was a very positive, I believe that Christine was going to send this to all the members if they want, we'll have follow-up meetings on it. But I think most importantly, there were five themes, and I'll just recap, there were five themes, five project ideas to narrow, to narrow things down, to jumpstart sort of activity downtown. Certainly the image and the beautification was certainly just the outlook of some of the businesses. Culture and arts, permanent street eatery program, interactive storefronts, safety and social services, making of facility improvements, downtown business support. And I thought this was interesting, the support for pop-up vacant storefronts. And I had to ask, what does that mean? It means that we're working with business owners that when small businesses want to go locate, they shouldn't have to, until they have a good solid footing, making that thousands and thousands of dollar investments is a disincentive. So I think that's, this is going to be a key to the future. And then something called floating loading docks. So these five themes we talked about, I think they're very positive. There's significant local support. I believe Council Drinkwater, when it comes to facades, we do have a facade program and the suggestion was, can some of the Arrow money be used to assist even the existing businesses, not just the new businesses, to, you know, to put some curb appeal on the buildings because that was certainly a significant issue. So the other issue, I do have a motion on, and it was supported by the Subcommittee to look at a bathroom downtown or just look at the feasibility. That's kind of a persistent message we've heard from residents, and I can I take that up now, Mr. Mayor, or later, but it just, I guess we'll take it later. This is just a report of the Economic Development Subcommittee. But I think it was very positive. There are, in the works, we're on phase two and then the phase three of this rapid recovery program has lots of good incentives and initiatives, I should say, moving forward. So that's the report for anyone that wants to, I believe that Christine was going to forward it to all the members that they, they want to look at it, but good information, statistics, and a plan. There's a plan on how to start reinvigorating the downtown and I think it's going to work. I do feel it's going to work. So, no, Council Chow, Council Drinkwater may have something to add, but thank you for Council Drinkwater, who was on vacation and participated in the meeting. We wanted to get in knowing the number of motions that have been filed and that was a response, so.
Okay. Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last paragraph of the report is a motion by Council Drinkwater, seconded by Council Chow, to explore the feasibility to place public bathrooms downtown. I understand that and I see the urgency there, but in my opinion, and take it for what it's worth, I know that I'd rather see people using the bathroom. I think it's no different than if there's a barrel there and people are throwing their trash on the ground. That's same similarity that I see. But the big picture that I see is, it seems to me that it's going to be an illegal unsanctioned injection site. That's just what I see when I think of that and I can't help thinking about that. I'm sorry, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Council Elliot?
Well, why don't we just take up the motion that I filed at the same time?
Sure.
Because we may as well talk about it.
Sure.
Motion, take a motion out of order by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Mercia, 11-2. Council Elliot requests City Manager to provide a report regarding possibility of providing public bathroom downtown, seconded by Council Mercia. Council Elliot?
It's not an easy motion. It's not an easy problem. I have no expectations. That's why I worded it carefully to just get some information. It comes with its share of problems and ills over time, even in the big cities, in Washington DC or anywhere else, in Boston even. However, time and time again, we get residents, we have, if you attend the downtown business neighborhood meetings, it's upsetting when people come out and they have to inhale the stench of urine or then they have to see public defecation in some doorway. And it's reality, it's happening. Just last week, I was at the Owl Diner in broad daylight, people just going right to the restroom in the, in the parking lot. So do I think it's the answer? I don't know. I don't know what it is, but it seems like when people have to go to the restroom, they need a place to go. I did learn that maybe St. Anne's has a place open downtown. I'm not a hun-
There are a few places downtown, Sanctuary on Appleton Street, the Elliott Church. So there are places. We'll get the full report. Sometimes there's one right nearby and people choose not to use-
We let people use the Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff's Office, yeah.
So, I mean, seemingly you would think, let's put a public bathroom, it'll be used respectfully and responsibly and it'll take care of a problem when people have to go to the restroom, whether it's people visiting or what have you. However, I understand good intentions, providing a restroom can soon turn into a public nuisance, can turn into a public safety issue, but what's the alternative? We just continue to let people defecate and urinate downtown? I don't think so. I just feel that we have to explore it and if, maybe there's a, you know, a pilot program, pilot location that can work. If it doesn't work, we're not going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on infrastructure. So it's, it's an idea. I don't know if it's going to go anywhere. I don't know if it's feasible, but at least we're trying something because it's, it's a problem and I don't think it's, it's a small problem.
Thank you. Council Conway?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just to make a quick point, and I certainly understand the situation and the sensitivity of it, but I will tell you that they used to, years ago, have bathrooms downtown. I do vaguely remember that and I'm not exactly sure where they were, but they did have public bathrooms down there. So, I mean, it certainly has been done in the past. I have no idea why they stopped them, but they were, they were available back again a number of years ago. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Okay, back to, need a motion to accept as a report of progress, the Economic Downtown Development Subcommittee. Motion by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Chow. Petitions. Miscellaneous, Daniel Daigle requests insulation in Handicap Park assigned at 19 Arlington Street from prior location of 40 Arlington Street. Motion to refer to the traffic engineer for a report and recommendation by Council Rourke, seconded by Council Drinkwater. City Council motions. 11-1, Council Elliot requests City Council vote to submit an application under the Community Preservation Act to provide funding for Rowley's Farm and their work with the Audubon Society to preserve the property for open space, seconded by Council Mercia. Council Elliot?
Maybe I should amend the motion because I don't know if I should say vote to submit. Can we get a report on the possibility of submitting an application or even an update? So I'll amend my own motion. It shouldn't say vote, it should say, discuss plausibility of submitting an application. I do think it's important, but I'll look forward to a report.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. 11-3, Council Elliot requests City Manager, requests the LRTA provide free bus service to the polling locations on Election Day, seconded by Council Mercia. Council Elliot?
Motion speaks for itself, Mr. Mayor. I know some communities are using public transportation as a method. I know we have to determine where those poll locations are. I don't know if there's enough lead time for LRTA to provide service to those locations, but if it's a way to get people out to vote, then I wanted to file a motion to explore it. Thank you.
Both primary and Election Day? Both days?
Makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. 11, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. 11-4, Council Elliot requests City Manager to have CFO provide a report regarding using American Rescue Plan funds to hire and end of it, an additional building inspector to address health issues, seconded by Council Noon. Council Elliot?
This motion was, we already discussed it from the Neighborhood Subcommittee and that's what it is in response to. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Council Mercia, 11-5, requests City Manager to provide a report as to how the city is handling ISOs in the neighborhoods. Example, 20 Starboard Street, Patteckerville, 318 Andover Street, Mount Vernon Street, addresses abandoned between Rock and Broadway Streets on said properties, seconded by Council Noon. Council Mercia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you go around the city, you start to see the blighted buildings- When you go around the city, you start to see the blighted buildings, or homes, in different neighborhoods, such as twenty Starbird Street, very blighted, and a hindrance to the neighbors that keep their property beautiful. This house brings the value of their property right down. I don't know what we could do, but I have led a campaign myself to get a few houses back on the tax roll, into the hands of people that took good care of them. Eight-eighty-seven Andover Street, there was a house on Douglas Road that was an eyesore, looks beautiful now. There was a house on Clark Road, beautiful corner lot. And my heart goes out to the person that is elderly now and can't take care of it, but in my opinion, I check these homes, and they're empty. They're empty probably because the homeowner is probably in a nursing home, or in a hospital, or, I don't know where they are, but the fact is, they're empty. Maybe they don't have a family that can upkeep the property. Is there any way we could deal individually with, even if we start one, and work onward, and try to bring that up to the beauty of which it is? You should see the house on Andover Street, it's gorgeous now. People are taking pride in it. I don't know what the situation was, but I'm trying to do that as I go around the city, and I mention these places here. Three-eighteen Andover Street, numerous warnings posted on the door, at least five. I know that the city, I bring it up to the attention of people, and they went there and cut the grass, tidied it up, so that it doesn't look too bad, although you still see the five notices on the, I didn't know what they actually read, because I was afraid to trespass, and at this time of season, I didn't want to get arrested at election time, so I stayed off the property. But anyway, so that's what's happening. Maybe there's someone that's in a nursing home, and their family doesn't live around here. I don't know, but this house takes away from the duties that the city should be giving other places, but yet they're going to this house, time and time again, cutting the grass. It isn't, I know we put a lien on the house if we do that, but all in all, that's time spent on something that doesn't even belong to them. And they have no, you know, they have enough work to do without doing this. Now, let me take you to the old friend's lumber. Someone is storing junk cars on the property, if you go there. There are seven cars, not one of them has a plate, there's two plows there, no plates on these cars, and it looks like a used car lot. It's an eyesore, and it's not far from the Starklossa School. In fact, it's like across the street. I don't know what's happening there, but I think this is city property now. Do you think? I don't know.
The city does own property, but I don't think the city owns where you're referring.
Oh, they don't?
I think that's a company that has-
If we could figure out who owns it, and they're allowing these cars to be there, take a ride up there, Madam Manager, and you'll see what I'm talking about. People just let you know about what's happening in the city. So this is the gist of this motion, even if we took one of those houses that I mentioned, and we bring it back to, we talk about, there's a housing shortage. There wouldn't be if we could fix these places up that are empty, and have people living there. So, I don't know, that's just a thought, if we could do something about that, that would be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Council Elliot? Well, I called you first.
Okay. Believe it or not, twenty Starbird Street, somebody's living there.
Oh, they are.
It's astounding. The city has been on this for, I can't tell you how long. I know the neighborhood organization has, it has to be twenty years, at least, and even then some, that this house is not inhabitable, but somebody is living there. So it's a very complicated situation, but I agree. It was there just two weeks ago, and there was an air conditioner, and somebody was inside, but I don't know what can be done, but that's, I mean, that house looks like it's ready to fall down, and somebody shouldn't be in it, never mind anything else, but just thought I'd let you know.
Thank you.
Very sad.
Council Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank Council Mercy for putting this motion on. I think it's excellent. You know, when you do go around the city, you see houses, and it's a shame, the kind of condition they're in. And I often think, what would happen if I lived next door to that? I mean, you see that every day, you witness it, and you know, as Council Mercy has said, you know, it affects the property values. And that one of the houses that's pointed out here, three-eighteen Andover Street, I walk by that almost every, almost every day, and I often wonder, does anybody live in there or not? I really don't know. Is there a way that, can we find out whether somebody lives there or not? And Council Mercy is correct, there's five or six that looks like notices. I was going to take a peek at them too, and I said, no, I'm not going to do that. But it, you wonder what kind of conditions inside, and what I'm afraid of too, in some of these old houses, that you have the youth that might all of a sudden go in them, and they could be fire traps, there could be all sorts of problems. So again, I'm not sure what we can do, but I think it would be a good idea to be able to highlight, you know, one at a time. That's how we probably have to do it. There's no way on earth you're going to be handling all of these in the city at one time, but, you know, if people can bring forward addresses like Council Mercy just did right here, I think this is, it's a start, and hopefully something can be done. So it certainly will help, not only just the neighborhood, but, I mean, help the city, and it will certainly make life a lot better for people that live in directly in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion, Council Mercy requests City Manager to provide any new information regarding possible new professional baseball team that will play at La Lasha Park, seconded by Council Roark. Council Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering if there's any move afoot to bring a professional baseball team to La Lasha Park, and if there is, could you, Madam Manager, provide a report, please, as to what's happening with that? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Eleven-eighteen, Council Samaras requests City Manager to have proper departments clean up and hogtop the upper and lower parking lots at Shed Park, seconded by Council Noon. Council Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the City Manager. I was asked by several people to look at the parking lots at the lower, the lower and upper field at Shed Park. Normally, when I've gone to any event there, I've parked my car in Boilson Street and walked over, but when I drove into the parking lot, I can see the concern of a lot of people, especially coaches that have the teams there. Just a lot, the asphalt is just about gone. I think we'd be better off with gravel, rather than the asphalt, but a lot of holes, and if you're not careful, you can probably badly affect your car. But the thing is, I've gone to a lot of events, or sporting events at different, at all the towns that surround Lowell, including all the areas in Lowell, and this is one of the worst parking lots around, and I think we have to do something with it. It's just been something that's been neglected. Also, there's a lot of ground cover, big piles of ground cover, that seem to be there, and, you know, it doesn't do any good, just piled up there, it just becomes more of a problem in that area. But it's really ground cover and the hogtop, it's in badly need of repair. And I don't blame, I'm surprised we haven't had more complaints about it than this until now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor, say aye. Council Noon, eleven-nine, request City Manager to have police superintendent increase police presence in vicinity of Frye Street, Wake Street, Dudley Court, due to recent incidents of vandalism, seconded by Council Mercy. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion came out of a July twenty-eighth Lower Highland neighborhood meeting, where we have Captain Kilmatten give a report, a very positive report, encourage a report, that the crime rate in the Lower Highland has decreased, with the exception of vandalism. It's concerned some of those streets was identified by Captain, and he put an additional patrol in the area. I think also a message ought to be sent to residents as well, that, you know, if you see something, say something, as, you know, promoted by the police department. I'm sure the uptick in the vandalism, not just in this area, in other areas of the cities as well. So I'm also certain that the captain in other sector are doing the same thing, is making sure that, you know, they go after those who vandalize car or properties, and so forth, and that's why I filed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Eleven-ten, Council Noon, request City Manager to provide City Council with a report regarding the city's efforts to help homelessness population with housing and employment, seconded by Council Elliot. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know the city, under this City Manager, have done a lot to help homeless people, working in partnership with other organizations like CTI, CBA, and Low Housing as well. So with federal grants, you know, it's coming to some of those nonprofit groups. I know although the coordinator, Shannon Norton, Shannon, I'm sorry, have done a remarkable job as well, just, all I'm asking is just a report of updated of the city effort, so that, you know, our residents know that the city have done a lot in terms of helping the homeless population in our city.
Thank you. Council, Madam Manager?
We will get that. Mary Shannon Thomas has been working with a number of organizations, as you said, and there has been a good amount of progress working with CTI, as well as getting vouchers, as well as getting housing. So we'll have a full report for you on this, which is an ongoing effort.
Council Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the sheriff is playing a good role in this as well, with the city's co-op team that go out on the streets and look to try to help people, try to get them into detox, try to get them into the hospital if they need it. There are times when they cut, quite often the times, they come in to the Sheriff's Office where I am, they go and they get clothes and blankets, whatever they need, but also, we have a co-op gentleman, he's unbelievable, as well as Louis Diaz, he works for the Sheriff's Office. He's unbelievable, and he goes out, and he brings people in, and they try to set them up with, what is your problem? Like, what do we, what do we need to help you? And when some of them are getting on the road to recovery, and they need a job, we have in the Sheriff's Office a job developer, so one hand feeds the other, and we get to know this person, and we send them on different interviews. But the fact is, Mass Hire and Timmy Hovey, they're unbelievable people. They work, they earn their money for the city, I'm telling you right now. I see it every day, and I'm amazed by it. So I just had to brag about it, because they're just tremendous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Eleven-eleven, Council Noon, request City Manager to provide City Council with a schedule for street sweeping, as well as a list of the numbers of sweepers owned by the city, seconded by Council Elliot. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion came about when it was out the last few weeks in Centerville and Potteckville, with regard to the schedule of street cleaning. People were just wondering, when my street's going to be cleaned? You know, you go to DPW website, because I don't know. So with those informations for them, it certainly helped, and I'm not sure how many either, what a street sweeper the city owned, and so, those are the information that we, you know, can share with the neighborhood group, and neighborhood group can pass along to the resident who attended the neighborhood group meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand the need for the street sweeper, and to make the streets look nice. That's very important. And I don't know if you're going to provide it in the report, but out of all the street sweepers that we have, there's only one that works, and from what I'm understanding, there's only one person that operates it. It's not like we have a crew that could go out there. So we're, depending on one person, one machine, one street sweeper to go out and do that. Let me just say also, you must remember that a street sweeper only goes like ten miles an hour. It's not a very fast vehicle, unless, of course, I was driving, and I tried to go as fast as I could, but, but anyway, so that's a little bit of the problem too, but, and if there are other street sweepers, is it possible we could have them fixed?
I think, and we'll give you that in the report, there is, I know there is one that is down, the, getting the parts and fixing it, I mean, it's very expensive, but we'll get an update from the Commissioner.
You know, we're kind of in a pickle. When we have the vehicles, we don't have the people. When we have the people, we only have one vehicle, so it's tough.
Thank you. Can I just add one comment to that too, Madam Manager? When the street sweepers do go out, I know, like, say the Huntsville Circle, you know, I know it's probably state-owned, but even if, once in a while, we could just take a sweep around there, because we'll never get the state to come up and clean it, so every once in a while, if we can just clean up sections when we're en route to another section, that would be helpful too. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Eleven-twelve, Council Drinkwater, requests City Manager to have proper department work with Mass DOT on ways and means to make the intersection of First Street, Route one-ten safer, including addressing vehicle speed of cars entering Lowell via Route one-ten, seconded by Council Chow. Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For anyone familiar with this intersection, you'll know that it's a fairly unconventional type of intersection, where First Street runs nearly parallel with Route one-ten. It comes to a fairly sharp intersection. You also have Bradley Street coming at Route one-ten from sort of an odd angle, and you have cars that end up pulling out onto Route one-ten, facing the road at a fairly odd angle, and attempting to make a turn with fairly fast oncoming traffic. So I heard from a few of the residents, you know, who have been dealing with the intersection for a long time, and just wanted to look into whether there are any ways to address it. And I don't know what the prescriptions might be to make it safer, but whether it's, you know, slightly reconfiguring it, so that the cars can approach the intersection at a safer angle at least, I think would be helpful, because, you know, you see cars entering Lowell via Route one-ten, the speed limit is reduced to thirty-five miles per hour, but if, where the sign is located, it's probably not more than two-hundred feet, one-hundred fifty, two-hundred feet from that intersection with First Street. So you still have cars who are still approaching that area at a fairly high speed. So just hoping that it's something that could be, could be looked at. I'll let the experts, you know, potentially make some recommendations about ways to, ways to address it, but just want to make sure it's something that can be addressed, hopefully before something serious happens there. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight, Council Drinkwater, request City Manager to provide a report regarding work being done to ensure the readiness of school buildings for the start of the school year, seconded by Council Noon. Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as mentioned earlier in the Subcommittee Report, there is a lot of work being done between the city and the school department, to make sure our school buildings are ready. I admitted, I don't think my notes from the Subcommittee really did proper justice to the amount of things that are, that are going on, and that Commissioner Clancy had mentioned at the meeting, so hopeful that, you know, a written report prior to the start of the school year can give a little bit more context to a lot of the work that's been going on. But the other reason I wanted to ask for this report is that, you know, a lot of those items mentioned, HVAC systems, they're fairly big-ticket and very important items that are being addressed for proper- are being addressed for proper ventilation and, you know, for public health reasons. But I'm also hoping beyond that, that this report can just include some of the ways that we're addressing more of the minor maintenance, things like, you know, plumbing, hot water, painting classrooms. I've heard from, you know, that, you know, there are teachers who have put in requests to have their, you know, classrooms painted or have holes filled and, you know, there's just, there's just a lot of work that needs to be done and unfortunately, you know, not a whole lot of people to do it. So I'm hoping that there can be a way, you know, in the sprint to before the school year, if there's ways that we can, you know, work collaboratively, you know, within departments, with the school department, just to try to make sure that all, you know, these requests for, for painting and just, you know, making sure the classes are, you know, look nice for when the students return can be addressed. So, so in addition to a number of the big ticket items that, you know, that were mentioned and that are ongoing and being worked on, just, you know, a plan for addressing minor maintenance hopefully before the school year starts would be, would be helpful. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Councilor Drinkwater, request city manager provide a report regarding the costs and logistics of the citywide mailing to inform residents of their rights and availability of resources to avoid eviction or foreclosure and whether such a mailing would be eligible to use the ARPA funding to provide, provided to the city. Seconded by Councilor Elliott. Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, evictions have been at top of mind lately as many people are aware. There was, has been a moratorium on eviction, evictions in place, put in place by the Center for Disease Control that had briefly expired. A new moratorium in certain circumstances was put back in place by the Center for Disease Control that applies to counties or areas that are experiencing, experiencing substantial risk from, from the COVID-19 pandemic. So, you know, many renters are once again covered, but only till October 3rd. So this isn't indefinite and I know I'm certainly concerned that as the moratorium expires, there are many renters who are, who are far behind on their, on their rent and will be facing eviction notices when, when that moratorium expires. So in addition to that, there's certainly, you know, homeowners who have fallen behind, you know, on their mortgages, maybe facing foreclosure and certainly landlords who are, you know, suffering because, you know, they've been at a loss of rental income because people have been affected by the pandemic. So, you know, there are resources out there, but oftentimes I think what we experience is, you know, resources go unutilized or underutilized. There's the process through the courts where oftentimes, you know, the, the state is encouraging things like mediation and, you know, for agreements to be reached between landlords and tenants to try to prevent people from being put out on the street, becoming homeless. There's rental assistance available, a significant amount of money has been put in place from the federal and state government. But there was a statistic in the paper in the Sun earlier today that there are over 5,000 incomplete applications for state rental assistance because of the, how cumbersome and complicated the application process can be. So knowledge in terms of the resources available, whether it be rights to go to court and try to work something out or resources available through the, through the community, you know, organizations like CTI that can potentially help to fill out those rental assistance applications and make sure that they're not going incomplete and that not only renters but landlords as well are able to avail themselves of the significant investment that's been put in place to make, keep people in their homes and make sure people are made whole for losses that have been incurred during the COVID pandemic. So one suggestion that I just wanted to look into was a mailing, a citywide mailing that would just let people know, let residents know of those resources that are available because evictions are devastating and foreclosures are devastating. And anything we can possibly do to prevent them through making people aware of resources, I think would just be extremely valuable because there's, there's been a lot of discussion about homelessness and it's mainly around the type of homelessness we see in places downtown. But there's also the type of homelessness that we don't see, the type of, the fact that there's over, you know, 1,000 students in the Lowell Public Schools who are considered homeless. And we don't see it because, you know, they may be doubled up with another family or friends or staying in hotels. But, you know, this is all a result of the fact that, you know, them and their families cannot afford a place to live and it's devastating on those, those kids and those families. So this is a public health concern. That's the reason that the CDC has put this moratorium in place up till now is for public health reasons to try to keep people in their homes during a pandemic. So with that, you know, the documented reasons for, you know, this as a public health concern, I wanted to look into whether this may be one use for the American Rescue Plan funding that has been provided to the city, just to simply let people know about the resources available to them and hopefully connect them with those resources, keep them in their homes, whether they're homeowners or renters. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Councilor Chow, eleven fifteen, request city manager investigate and report on the following two issues on School Street, collapsed wall at the cemetery between intersection of Middlesex and Branch and the collapsed retaining wall along the roadway near the Middlesex, the intersection of Middlesex Street. Seconded by Councilor Elliott. Councilor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I decided to combine these two properties into one motion because there are two blocks next to each other. The cemetery is the one-
Just speak up a little louder if you can.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
It's still a little quiet.
Okay. Let me see if I can scream a little bit more. So I decided to combine the two motions together because they are on the same, two blocks next to each other. The cemetery is the one right across from the CMA. The wall is beginning to fall down and the part two of that is the collapsed retaining wall from a, what I understand is a multi-unit private property. It's not only an eyesore, it's also a pedestrian safety issues. And right now they are Jersey barriers that put up by the city to block off the sidewalk so kids walking on the sidewalk to go to school, they have to cross the busy sidewalk, I mean, the busy street to go to the other side. This is very, very dangerous. A lot of residents in area call to let me know about it. If something that could be done to those two areas, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Eleven sixteen, Councilor Conway, request city manager provide an update regarding COVID-19 virus and the newest virus, Delta. Report to include a plan of strategies for our students, staff, and schools opening in September. Seconded by Councilor Rook. Councilor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that city manager and certainly a team and partners have done a, a great job dealing with the COVID-19 virus and we've seen it week after week and we've got reports on it. What I'd like to do is just get if, to get an update on what is actually happening right now, you know, what, what stage are we at? And I know that there's certainly talk about that second surge and possibly even a third surge. And I'm just wondering how these numbers, how they match up and how we match up with numbers to different cities and towns. And further, this new virus, which I don't think a lot of people know much about is the Delta. We've heard bits and pieces on it. You know, the one thing that does stand out is that apparently it's very contagious. That's, that's my understanding. And I'm sure that you're in, in touch with the, the medical field on a regular basis. I was fortunate enough to be in Boston today and I did talk to some medical people and, and they were very concerned with this Delta virus and they were starting to do preparations for it. So if you could come up with a report in regards to that and also, you know, we are talking about going back to school in September and we're, as Councilor Drinkwater mentioned, the getting the buildings ready and making sure that they're safe. But also, what, what kind of strategies do we have as far as the virus is concerned with our students and our staff? What, what procedures are we taking in, in that area? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Eleven seventeen, Councilor Conway, request city council vote to meet an executive session for the purpose of discussing an extension for the city manager's contract. Seconded by Councilor Elliott. Councilor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it is fiscal responsible for us to start the process of discussing an extension to the city manager's contract. We have, and I truly believe we've had, been extremely fortunate that our city manager, along with her team, have been very effective in leading the city through one of the worst and most complicated periods in the history of Lowell. And I applaud each and every one of you for that. Because of these competitive times that we're in now, we have witnessed firsthand here on the council, the difficulties recruiting and hiring and keeping key employees for the city of Lowell. For example, how many times have we talked about the auditor? How many times have we interviewed? How many times have we put it out into the press and the different organizations to try to find an auditor? Traffic engineer, another, another position that's so very difficult to, to fill. And, and there's others too. I think that competition for these key positions are keen and therefore, in order to ensure continuity, I believe we have an obligation to the people of Lowell to act sooner than later and do the responsible thing. And that would be to start the process with the city manager as soon as possible. And I hope my colleagues will support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments on the motion? Well, I'm just going to, Councilor Rook?
I'm just curious what the manager's reaction to. So if that's something she be, wants to do or not, I mean, it's odd that it comes from a councilor, but just curious to see what, you know, the manager's intentions are.
I mean, from the chair, I'm just going to say that I think the process is too early right now. We have an election going on and we will get notified from the manager when it's time to discuss her contract. So I'm not going to support it tonight. Councilor Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city solicitor, I know that a city councilor, I know that we as a body of counselors, we cannot try to get ourselves a raise 90 days before an election. Does this apply to a contract, which a contract extension could possibly have an added amount of money? I don't know. So could you, before I go into executive session or if I even want to, I would like to know that before I go in there. Could you check that out for us?
Sure. I can take a look at that carefully.
Okay. And secondly, Madam Manager, did you talk to Councilor Conway about this contract extension?
Madam Manager?
I have not asked anyone to file.
You did not?
That's the question.
It is my understanding that you said on the radio, Madam Manager, when asked this question, you said that you didn't want to make this decision an election issue and that felt, that you felt it should be left up to the next council and that you are not looking for an extension at this time. Do you remember saying that?
I do.
So having said that, I will honor your wishes and call this motion a mute issue. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are, we are the manager's boss, there are nine of us. And if Councilor Conway thinks this is a good move, then he can file the motion. And I agree, you know, the past two years, they've been unlike any other times in our lives. It's unpredictable, unsettling. Each day brings new hope and then at the same time seemingly, a short time later, more uncertainty. Life's changed as we know it, many facets, including government, remote meeting, services to the public. We're still wading through problems like we talked about tonight as a result of COVID with, with traffic, yard waste and trash pickup, bringing businesses back, homelessness. And while we have a lot of work to do, I think we're poised by any, better than any other city, considering the circumstances. It's an incredible, challenging time to be the city manager. Seems like every other week a new crisis hits. Life's too unpredictable at this point in my opinion for all of us. We're all worried about COVID, the future. Parents are concerned about their children in schools. Businesses are anxious of whether they're going to survive. Our seniors are concerned about their health and many people wonder about their jobs. But we're a resilient city and the city manager and her, and her team have stayed the course and have proven to me time and time again that you're up for the challenge. I leaned on you and your finance team, Connor Baldwin, assessors office, Sula May. You brought financial stability during a time of daily change. We've worked in concert with our police, our fire, we've adjusted firefighters, addressed the brownouts, our frontline workers. Special thank you to our nurses because this is not over and they're tired. And to all those frontline workers, all, all our city workers. So what does the future bring? Nobody knows because it continues to change, but to me, right now, what we need is stability. And we need stability in our government and we need, between the daily news feeds, the uncertainty of the economy, the hospital, now this new Delta virus, any other host of issues. So I think this motion is appropriate. I think that we let voters know the election is coming, let the voters know our intentions beforehand and there's a primary in five weeks. We all participated in performance ratings. We all lauded the city manager time and time again, just recently. All of us are impressed with the work that you and your staff do between vac sites, COVID testing, Lowell High School construction, diversity and equity issues, you know, the new electoral system. Any one of these issues could have been handled in one term and you had, we've had them all in, all together. And I, and I think that we're, we're doing well. This $70 million that we're about to embark on, to me, it's critical that we have an individual and a team with institutional knowledge to ensure that we're funding our city and schools appropriately with someone who is keenly aware of the needs and the best use of this, of this funding to address, to address the deficiencies. So these are just a few examples, I think, of the importance of maintaining continuity and steadiness and stability that comes with experience and leadership. So, you know, more importantly, in four months' time, there's going to be a brand new city council here, five members of which will never have served because of the new electoral system. There's just new districts. So navigating these issues really require, again, someone that's been at the helm. So to me, now is the time for continuity. I completely, I disagree. I think it's, it's not time to speculate on the future of a city administration. Business leaders, new investors, they want security in their government. Neighborhood leaders who have strong relationship, nonprofit leaders, relationship with the city manager. All this is part of what makes Lowell tick. So for those who think it's too early, it's, for me, it's not. The climate is, not in this climate, not with so much uncertainty. So I feel we have a city manager continues to perform. She's, she's interested in staying. She knows the issues. She listens to the council. She brings forward solutions to problems and she communicates, all the things that we are looking for in a city manager. So- So to me, if it's not broke, let's not fix it. Be upfront with the voters and the taxpayers right before the election, let them know where we stand. And I let the taxpayers know where I stand tonight. I support the administration, I support this motion, and again, we're poised to maintain, we are proven steward of the city, and let's keep Lowell moving forward. Thank you.
Any other comments? Council Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is not an easy issue, I mean, as I agree, I believe knowing the city council has been as strong a supporter of the city manager than I have been and continue to be. However, I believe that this is not an appropriate time to bring up the contract of the manager. She has the respect and support of this entire city council, there's no question about that. But any action taken at this time would just make this be an election issue. That's what I feel. If you look at the election, we need to acknowledge that there will be significant change on how this council will operate. And the new counselors must be given the opportunity to negotiate their needs. It's what it's about. I mean, I just hope to be able to work with them in the next election, to work with the city manager on the future of Lowell. But we are talking about the future of Lowell, and we are talking about timing. We're talking about, is it a proper time to do something? It's not a proper time. This will become an election issue, and it'll take away from all of the good work that's been done. There is no question that the city manager has been a leader in a very, very difficult time. And sometimes I've heard, I remember talking to someone about a leadership of someone else, and they said, "Well, this is COVID. We don't know how well they can lead till we're over this problem." No, when you have a problem, that's when you find out what your leadership's all about. So in no way do I want to say, "I don't want to give the city manager a pay raise," or "a contract." I was the strongest advocate when she came in here, to give her, as mayor, a four-year contract. But the next, but in four years, it was basically almost the same type of city, same city council. What you have now is, we're going into a whole different way of electing officials. And what we have to do is not, we'll say, mar any of this by creating a problem, in a sense of, I think, and I know, that whoever wins this next election, that if not everybody, the majority will say, "We need to have the city manager remain and continue to lead this city." But they should have the opportunity to do that. When we act in such a way that we take away that opportunity, we're creating a problem. We can say that, you know, we owe something to the people. Yeah, we do owe something to the people. We owe them the opportunity to ensure that if we have an election process, that it's a legitimate election process, and that whoever becomes the successes or wins in those elections, that they'll have the opportunity to do their job. And this is not in any way, I mean, because I'm having a very, very difficult time with this. My issue is, I would have given her a 50-year contract at the time if I could. But, and the thing is, you know, I don't want to say too much, but the thing is, in life, you're told, there's the right way to do something, and there's the smart way to do something, or the political way. And I suppose if I just said, be quiet and say, "Okay, let's, I don't want to make any waves." But it's the right thing to do, not to send the message that we do not want this city manager. It's to send the message that we want to ensure that everybody has equal opportunity to do their job. And the city manager has to have the support. I believe that she will get that support. But at this point, I have a difficult time having a motion that's filed by a city counselor on giving the city manager the raise. The thing is, the city manager, I wish had come to us, you know, as a city council on hold, to seek that raise. It might have created a different situation. But be that as it may, I just believe it's the right thing to do, and whatever it is when you do, when you try to do the right thing, you just try to do the right thing, and you live with it. But I want to say personally to the city manager, I think you've been one of the best city managers that this city has ever seen, and you have done a wonderful job in this city, and I want you to continue on. But it's just an issue about timing at this particular point. I have an issue with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Council Conway for bringing up this motion and sort of give us the opportunity to give the manager an informal evaluation, which I think Council Elliot did an excellent job, highlighting some of the difficulties the manager managed the city through this war pandemic time. Also, which is bringing to the local level how great of a job the manager has done. I love the fact that she goes to neighborhood meetings, I mentioned that many times, that just being out there, you not only just run different departments, the city, different issues, you also show up in person to reassure the residents that all the things you're doing is gonna be okay for the city. And I can say enough great things about your staff, they are very responsive, very professional, just, you have an excellent, excellent team. And good staff like that come from the culture of leadership, so that shows that you are a good leader to your staff and to the administration. As Counselors Samaras mentioned, I have a very, very difficult time voting on this motion, because I'm afraid that's being seen that it's a vote against manager, against you, or against the administration. It absolutely is not. I cannot say enough good things about what you have done. What it comes down to is really was the timing. We have a lot, yeah, done a great job, we have a lot more things to do. We have to work about school construction, the new COVID Delta variant, the trash pickup, the business development that we need to do, so many important issues that we need to deal with. And I appreciate your candid response to Council Mercier's question of what do you want, your desire, whether you ask for this, to be extended or not, and certainly, it did not come from you. So I'm not quite sure why this motion come up at this point. I just feel that it's not, it's not at the right time. The second thing that I want to stress is, an important discussion like this about the city manager and the contract and so forth, I think it should be discussed in this public meeting. I don't think it should go behind door, go behind an executive session. You know, I think the public deserves to hear what we have to say, how we feel about the city manager, how we feel about the job we have been doing. I think it should be discussed in this current type of meeting. And I think for that alone, I'm calling to vote no against going into the executive session. You know, it's, it's just, again, the timing, I can't say, stress enough about that. So that'd be my vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and let me say, you know, Madam Manager, I think you've done an excellent job running the city, and as others have said, you know, I don't think there's any question at all that that's not only my feeling, but that is the feeling of this body. And I think if in the future you do express a desire to extend your current contract, I think the city council would be very wise to enter into those discussions and hopefully reach an agreement. But as I sit here right now, I do believe that that is a decision that would be, best be made by the incoming city council when they convene in January. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, yes, you know, we are a body that's elected for two years, and we need to make decisions throughout the course of those two years as they come up, you know, regardless of the timing, whether it happens during, in an election season or not. But where we do have some control over the timing of these matters, I do think it's important that we take into account the fact that these are, these are political jobs. We get elected to these jobs by getting votes, and, you know, oftentimes, issues can get politicized when they happen during the heat of an election season. And although I take this motion fully, you know, in good faith, I believe it to be made authentically, we do just have to be aware that even the hint, you know, in the eyes of the public, you know, of, you know, the, if there is any politicization of such a consequential decision of this council, one of the most consequential decisions that we are tasked with making, then, you know, certainly, it's just not good in terms of, in terms of the public trust. So, you know, with that said, I do believe that this is a decision that is best suited for the next council to make. And again, I state, you know, certainly, you know, I think you've been doing an excellent job, but I will be voting no on this motion tonight. Thank you.
Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion put not only, not only most of this council, or all of this council, sitting here in a difficult position, but also the manager sitting in front of us. There's no doubt that this city manager is doing a great job, managed the city through this difficult time. There's a number of topics that's alluded to by Council Elliot, COVID-19, the new election system, the DEI issue, and so on. I will support this manager if and when she asks for extension of her contract. But as I said, I don't want to see, I don't want to use this motion as an election issue. It is an election issue motion. It'd make it difficult for us sitting here to say, to believe in the manager's, her work, her team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? Council Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll share all the sentiments with my colleagues, no complaints at all about the job that the manager and the team is doing. And I'll just, I'll just say that, you know, look forward to talking about any type of extension that the manager would be looking for come January. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call? Oh, sorry. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me, let me just, obviously, any motion, it's up to the council, how the council wants to handle it. And I respect the council's vote on any such motion. Let me clarify two points. One, you know, several months ago, and Council Mercier asked me a question about, did I want to extend my contract at that time? And I did answer on a number of occasions, no, we'll, you know, just see how it goes with the new council. That's 100% true. Let me also say that unfortunately, and I do want this, so I welcome the opportunity to have this discussion on the council floor, and I'll tell you why. For some reason, many people chose to take that statement to say that I don't want to continue in this job, that I don't want to extend the contract. Therefore, she's leaving. That could not be further from the truth. Let me make this abundantly clear. There's people who are, have mischief afoot, and they like to spread rumors, but it's becoming problematic. I just want people in the city to know that when I said many months ago, "Let's wait, let's not make it a political issue," and I said it at my word, that did not mean, "I don't want this job." Because in the next breath, I made it very clear, I love this job, I've been doing this job, and when people have asked me, multiple people over the past month, "We hear you're leaving, you're leaving in September, you're leaving," they quote me to me. And I can only say so many times, "That is not true. That is false." So I want the record to be very clear on this point, that for those who want to twist, play games, misstate, my honest words about, "Let's wait till the next council comes in." To try and translate that into that I'm not committed to this job, that I'm not doing this job, that I don't want this job, I take issue with that. And so I welcome this opportunity to have had this discussion on this council floor. As I said, I totally respect what the council wants to do. If the council says, "Let's go in and talk," we could go in and talk. Why behind closed doors? Because that's the law. When there's a contract, that's the law, it has to be behind closed doors. So that, I want that perfectly clear. The other point that's been said here twice tonight about that I was requesting a raise, that if I wanted a raise, I should have come, I have never, ever said such a thing. So I want the record to be perfectly clear that I didn't ask for this motion, but nor did I ask anybody about a raise. That's important. It's important to me, because that has not been part of any discussion or anything that I have suggested. So let's be clear and stop playing games. I'm here to do a job. We work very, very hard, my team and I work very, very hard every day, day in and day out. When people want to play games and try and start rumors, make false representations that I'm leaving, that's not helpful. So let me be clear to everybody in the city, I have no such plans to go anywhere. Thank you.
Council Elliot?
Thank you. All the more reason to vote for this motion, in my opinion. Thank you for the clarification, because it just lays it all out, all the speculation. And that's the reason why I want to move forward with this, with this motion, and all the more reason. Action speaks louder than words. We all talk, "Oh, everything's going," you know, if we, if you want somebody on your team that's performing, then you don't wait till the last minute to say, "Oh, well, we're gonna see if we can keep you." That's not how it works anywhere, not just in the sports world, in the corporate world. You have a good someone, and you want him on your team, you don't wait till the last minute. You go out and you make sure you do what it takes to do that. And that's what I, that's what I feel that we should be doing. Not the next council, who knows how long it's gonna take, six months, eight months, to get up to speed, given the turnover. That's not in the best interest of the city, in my opinion. There're gonna be a lot of smart people, a lot of good, dedicated people, but it takes time. Every single one of us who started their first term knows the learning curve. And that's not the time to change administrations, in my opinion. So just make it abundantly clear, before the election, let the taxpayer know, "I want to keep the city manager, or I'm gonna roll the dice, and we'll see what happens on January 2nd. That's not where I'm at." So that's why I'm gonna vote for this motion.
Thank you. Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I ask these questions not because I heard the rumor, or I started a rumor. I said these questions because I wanted to know the answer. I never heard that you wanted a raise, but a contract, sometimes extension, there's a raise involved with that. I don't say that you asked for one, or wanted one, or whatever rumor went around, I don't know that. I simply asked the question if it's legal, because we can't ask for a raise. That's all that I was asking. And I kinda am a little set back by this motion, because it puts me in a very precarious situation, as if, if I don't support a contract extension, this'd be another rumor that I don't want you here. And that is the furthest, furthest thing from the reason I will not extend a contract at this time. at this time. Will I do it eventually? If it comes up, and there's a new council here? Yes, I will. I'm not afraid to say it. Have you done a tremendous job personally? I think so. In my opinion, I believe you have. But I can't support it right now. It's like saying to the kids, "No, you can't have the bike. The roof is leaking, we got to fix the roof first." That's my analogy. I want to extend your contract, but not at this time. I don't think it's fair to the people that are going to come in. Let them decide how they can work with you, how they see what we see. That's the only reason, and it makes me feel like by not supporting this, I don't support you. That'll be the headlines tomorrow, probably, and it's certainly, Eileen, is not true. So please, I don't know what the rumors are, there's rumors to me that there's six people trying to get me out of this chair. Well, God bless you if you can, but be that as it may, maybe you will, I don't know, but please don't think that I'm making this because I don't want you here. I, and I don't know, but rumors start, I think it's unfair that they should say these things, but I want you to know I support you, but I don't support this.
Thank you. And as I said, I welcome this opportunity for setting the record straight and making it clear.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Chow?
No.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
No.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
No.
Counselor Mercier?
No.
Counselor Noon?
No.
Counselor Rourke?
No.
Counselor Samaras?
No.
Two yeas, seven nays. Motion fails.
Thank you. Next one, 1118. Counselor Rourke, "City manager have LPD informed residents of what's being done about illegal operations on dirt bikes in the city." Seconded by Counselor Mercier. Counselor Rourke?
Thank you. This basically speaks for itself. I know that they had, I think it was Deputy LeBlanc, has been doing the media tour, explaining what the police department has done in regards to illegal operation of dirt bikes, registered operation of dirt bikes. He did say, he mentioned that the main number for the police department can be called with an address, and they will go tow an illegal dirt bike when it's not registered, so hopefully don't have to work too hard on the motion. I know that they have towed a number of dirt bikes so far, maybe just, we can kick out the phone number again, and just state what the police department has done, already being, like I said, more proactive than reactive in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight by myself, "Request city manager review payroll operations of the city and the school department to ensure it's operating at 100% efficiency." Seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. Motion speaks for itself, just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to work together on payroll operations. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion by myself, "Request city manager provide update regarding picking up litter campaign throughout the city." Seconded by Counselor Rourke. Motion speaks for itself, just looking for an update on what we're doing, which we have spoken about tonight on other motions. All those in favor, say aye. Last motion tonight by myself, "Request city manager update city council regarding homelessness situation in Lowell's business district." Seconded by Counselor Mercier. Again, this motion speaks for itself, we spoke about it tonight on numerous motions. Any announcements? Counselor Elliott?
It's not an announcement, but I think it's positive news. I think this, I think I should request a suspend the rules, because this is regarding the Lowell elections and the Census Commission. We just got a report from Elliot Veloso, so I'll make that in the motion of a suspension of the rules.
Sure.
Just get the email.
Suspend the rules by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Noon. Counselor Elliott?
I think this is good news, the report from the expert, I don't know, Madam Solicitor, you know the report, I don't know if you want to chime in it, but it does, I think, for all of us that have been advocating for additional polling locations, the report reflects additional polling locations, and if there's no objection, Mr. Mayor, I know it's last minute, but I do think, given the concern and with the elections, I do think it's important. We can't wait two weeks to have this information.
Sure, you can be a latter. Go ahead.
So I'd request that you just give a brief update, that the city will subdivide the districts 1, 4, and 8, resulting in 11 polling locations. Madam Manager?
I think this has to be, go before the Election Commission tomorrow evening.
Tomorrow evening, but that's the recommendation from the, from the expert?
It is. So the, this report was forwarded off late today to the Election Commission. I also had asked Elliot Veloso to send it to the council as well, so everyone is up to speed as soon as possible, and as you said, there have been a, three additional polling locations that have been identified by the expert, and I think one of the things that, over the next several days, as people have an opportunity to read through the report, it's a, it's sort of a fascinating analysis, and we begin to really understand how complex these issues really are. And again, even though everyone has the best of intentions as to what would make an election better, when you go through the report, you can see that, again, it's a fairly complex matter, sometimes there are competing interests, things that weigh against each other, and it's just, again, a fascinating look into how these decisions are made, or how these decisions should be made. We were fortunate to have an expert work with us in creating the eight districts to begin with, and we continue to be fortunate to be working with an expert in light of the fact that we don't have our census data, and we need to be able to move forward. So again, I would encourage everybody that, when they get a chance to, to read the report, and it will be discussed in full and presented at tomorrow's Election Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for putting this brochure on everybody's desk, because this is very important. I went to the event last year, they're having it on Saturday, August 14th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's called Cars and Cans, and it's presented by Alex Lambert. It's a nonprofit charitable car event. It's at Showcase Cinema at 32 Rees Avenue in Lowell. If you bring three cans per car, or one per spectator, if you're putting a car in the show, three cans, very reasonable. Or you can give a cash donation. All donations are greatly appreciated, and they benefit the Merrimack Valley Food Bank. There's many, many sponsors, thank you to the sponsors. We know that people need to eat, not everybody has the money, so this is a good cause, and I'm thanking Alex Lambert for a great job.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce, we are looking at a heat wave for the next three days, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so we will be opening the senior center as a cooling center, 275 Broadway in Lowell, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. each day. So either, if anyone who's listening doesn't have air conditioning, or they know people who are in that situation, the cooling center will be open each day with soft drinks and what have you available, so, just so the public knows.
Thank you. Motion adjourned, but do you have an announcement?
Yeah, quickly, just this Sunday, there's two events with the Lowell Fire Department, 8:30, they have their parade up to the Civic Center for the memorial at nine o'clock, and then I believe at 10:30, they're doing their 9/11 dedication as well. So 8:30 for the parade to start up to the Civic Center, and then 10:30 for the 9/11 dedication. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then, let me get my calendar, we have a flag raising Saturday morning, too, at 11 o'clock for the, yeah, Indian flag raising. Okay, motion adjourned by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Rourke. Thank you.